Shiloh, thanks for welcoming our two new members. And just for Renee and Trevor's information, Shiloh is our head of nutrition services and also, I believe, transportation now, right? Yep, okay, great. He is a reliable attendee at board meetings, which I really appreciate. And I'm not sure if you've had the chance to meet with Luke yet. Luke is our, a lot of things, director of IT, correct? And director of community partnerships. What else?
I don't know, a few other things, libraries. And I think I'm handing off CTE to Karen, which is really lovely. So I'll be able to focus on some of those other things.
Very cool. Hi, Dave. Hi, Inez.
There we go. Hi, Brandy.
We still have a few minutes, but would anybody like to volunteer to lead us in the flag salute when it's time?
I can.
All right, cool, thank you. And Joe, before we start, I'll try to remember to do your interpretation piece. Thanks.
Hey, Brandy. I still have to give you something for what you did before. So we'll catch up for.
Oh, for the gift?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we're recording and Ron and Bob might be watching, but haven't delivered it yet because we're waiting on a special thing from Jen ordered. So it'll be next week, so plenty of time. Are you on? All right, it looks like we are all here. We're one minute early, maybe 30 seconds, but I think it's okay to start. Joe, do you mind giving the introduction in Spanish so people understand that our interpretation services are up and running?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, officially calling this meeting to order. Last time we'll use the gavel, I'll be passing this on to the next willing board chair, which is quite exciting. Let's move into our flag salute. And Director Pyros has graciously volunteered.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's agenda, we've got kind of a short meeting. Important, very first thing on our agenda will be the oath of our newly elected members. Then we'll move into electing our chairperson and our vice chairperson. Then we'll be doing public comments. So it's a little bit unusual or out of the ordinary, but this meeting specifically, we ensure that those two things are done before comments. After public comments, we'll move into board comments and hear from our superintendent. We'll review the consent agenda. Then we'll move into our one report today about ready-to-use schools, safe learner update. We have one piece of old business, which is finalizing our plans for our board retreat. And then under new business, we have some designating signatories and authorizing deposits with Nikki. So with that, let's get started.
I'm sure. I have some amendments to the agenda I would like to request. Should we wait until after we've seen the new board members to have that conversation?
Yeah, I think the end of the agenda is a great time to do it for future agenda items.
I would like to do this meeting as per board policy.
Well, I, we can have this conversation. I'm reluctant to say yes, because there hasn't been any forewarning or notification of what these items are, which means staff and board members will not be prepared for it.
These were sent to a week ago and you refused to list them on the agenda.
No, Brian, because no one person can dictate what goes on the agenda as a board. If we decide to put items on the agenda, then we will do that. And that's why I'm suggesting we do it at the end of the meeting for future agenda items. And if the board decides that they want to talk about these things, they will be placed on future agenda items according to what the chair does when they, he or she creates the agenda.
I will, after we see our new members, I will be moving to reopen the discussion of the agenda.
I'm not the chair after that, so it is up to the future chair. Okay, let's get to business. So we've got our oath of office. So what I will do, since there are three of you and we're not in person, and it can be kind of clunky, because we've got to say each person's name. I'll go ahead and just start with Renee, move into Trevor, and then finish with Inez. So Renee, are you ready?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Just repeat after me. Well, I'm going to say I, then you say your name. I.
I, Renee Powell.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
Of school board member, best to my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Trevor, are you ready?
Yeah.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, Trevor DeHart.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of office.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
Right, congratulations. It's like a little anticlimactic when we're not all in person, but everybody's laughing. All right, Inez, are you ready?
I am.
All right, I.
I, Inez Pena.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
School board member to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, that's exciting. We don't get to do it often enough, so congratulations to everybody. All right, next up on the agenda is electing our new chairperson, which is quite exciting. So what we'll do is open it up for nominations. And once nominations are done, we'll close nominations. And then we can discuss each candidate separately and also then vote on each candidate separately.
I nominate Director Pyros for chair of 2021-22.
I don't believe nominations were formally opened.
Nominations are formally open and Chair recognizes Director Pena's nomination of Director Pyros. Director Pyros, are you willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay.
Dave Brown.
Dave Brown, Director Brown, are you willing to serve?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor for nominations. And we'll take the nominations in order, so we'll start with Director Pyros. Would anybody like to speak regarding Director Pyros' potential chairpersonship?
Yeah, I can share why I nominated her. You know, Rebecca has not only been in the district for a while as an employee and has that background, but also has served on the board. And the time that I've been on the board, she has been super welcoming, has the abilities to go above and beyond, really to know the material ahead of time. She has to memorize it because she's not always able to see things, which also reminds us to be mindful of the abilities or the extra needs that we need to provide or meet for her. And it's a reminder that we have students that may have similar needs. And if we're thinking of all students, you know, she is a great example of not only having the ability, but also embracing part of the community that is often unseen or unheard.
I would also like to speak in favor of Director Pyros. Director Pyros is the next senior member of the board, and she is well-prepared to take on the responsibilities of this chair position. In addition to her service to the board, Director Pyros worked directly with students and staff at NHS for years as a secretary. And we all know that the secretaries are the ones who run the show in the school buildings. In my time on the board with Rebecca, she has repeatedly shown up and done the work. She's professional, diplomatic, capable. Director Pyros also volunteers her time to serve on the budget committee at the WESD and the state level on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. Her service does not stop in the boardroom. She is deeply connected to our community and our schools, having raised three NHS graduates. She's the first to raise her hand to volunteer and has actively served on every committee she's been assigned to and then some. She was pivotal in the classified employee contract negotiations. She regularly attends parent group meetings and is at every event she's invited to. Director Pyros shows up. She's willing to learn. She's respectful to staff and the community, and she's prepared. As elected chair, Director Pyros has the proven ability to remain professional under challenging circumstances, a strength that the next board chair must possess. Some of the words that constituents used to describe Rebecca in emails of support were fair, kind, knowledgeable, and a listener. Director Pyros is clearly the most qualified school board member to take on this role and the best leader to work collaboratively in building relationships both among board and staff.
May I say something?
Yep.
I want to welcome the new board members, Trevor and Renee and Inez again. And as your first action, we'll be electing a board chair. And I'm offering my candidacy as a choice between excellent leadership skills versus partisan popularity and divisiveness. I want you to know that I have served as a House captain for the Republican Party. I have lived for 25 years in a conservative Christian community, and I understand and can relate with all sides of the questions and problems that we have facing us. I, as this board chairman, promise to be neutral and a listener and willing to show respect to all members of the board and to all members of our community, whether we agree or not agree, but to show respect and so that will build trust. And I, as the board chair, I will also show that I have the commitment, the time, and the energy to do all the duties necessary that the board has, the board chair has, that will reflect the board policies and the procedures, which are the framework of the board work. And I will help the new board members to grow in their knowledge of their board work and their responsibilities to ensure that we are a highly functioning board that builds a culture of trust and respect that will help in our achievement gaps and academic excellence, success for all students. I just want you to know that I will listen to all people and will reach out to build consensus and do my best to serve as I have in the past. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Or comments for Director Pyros? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Director Brown. Brian, would you like to start us off, since you nominated?
Yeah, I mean, this is all extremely out of order. You're not supposed to campaign during the voting, but okay. I think Dave has shown, you know, in his 30-plus years with the school district, excellent leadership, the ability to bring people together, ability to build a team, which is what we desperately need on this board. And I think he will be an excellent chairperson and will fairly and impartially follow the rules under which we claim to operate, which we have not been doing up to this point. And that will be a breath of fresh air.
Are there other comments or thoughts to share for Director Brown? Okay, I've got some, some things to say. I think Dave is a fun guy to grab a beer with, but unfortunately, he's not suited for the leadership position on this board. In the two years that Director Brown has served on this board, he's proven to be contentious, divisive, and unwilling to learn even the basics of board roles. He's often underprepared for meetings and has a history of simply turning off his camera when he doesn't want to vote. And when he does vote, he offers no explanation, when he abstains or votes no. When the community pleaded with him last summer to explain his no vote on the anti-racist resolution, he was silent. As a publicly elected official, he flat-out refused to speak with constituents. The people he represents were left angered and stunned by his silence. I've been left stunned by his off-the-cuff comments during board meetings more than once. The one that stands out the most was at last August board meeting when he stated that, quote, "Books are dangerous because they can say anything." A school board member warning of the dangers of books. Director Brown's lack of professionalism extends beyond the boardroom. When he does respond to constituents or staff members, he's been threatening and incredibly offensive. Asking people how they feel about abortion or insinuating that he knows their political leanings while threateningly stating that he knows where people live is not the behavior of a leader. The threats have spilled into the boardroom, and Director Brown has yelled at his fellow board members and threatened to, quote, "bury us" in emails. He does not have the professional or personal skills needed in this critical position. While crying for transparency, he has set up several Facebook profiles, some linked to his school board email, entered into very murky situations in regards to conducting meetings outside of public view, and has demanded the superintendent fire staff that he doesn't agree with. He also states that he'd like to make the school board more efficient while showing up to meetings underprepared to vote or even discuss issues that have been before the board several times. It is also clear that Director Brown represents the high school and those who agree with him, full stop. His repeated focus on small portions of our district is representative of how he views his role. He does not represent the entirety of our schools or district and seems to have no interest in doing so. Director Brown has not shown that he possesses any of the required skills to be a non-biased representative of a nonpartisan board that often disagrees. He has not demonstrated the initiative to respond to constituents, and he's made it clear that the only, he only represents those who support him. He's overwhelmed by technology and cannot balance the large amounts of emails and time that it takes to be the chair of this board.
I call the question.
As a board member, I'm not done yet. As a board member, Director Brown did not serve on his committee assignments even after repeated attempts to engage them. Nor did he offer any information as to why he refused to serve. He is late to meetings, he is left early, and again with no explanation. He repeatedly cancels and fails to reschedule individual meetings again with little or no explanation. As chair, it is incumbent that the person serving the board is reliable, professional, and knowledgeable about what a board does. Director Brown is none of these, and he has shown time and time again that he has no interest in learning or growing. If he is elected chair, I shudder to think of the consequences that his representation or lack thereof will do to set back not only this board, but our entire district. What is certain is that the meetings will not be conducted professionally. Staff will be reluctant to engage and work with him, and any hopes of a peaceful relationship among board members will be dashed. This is a crucial vote for our new members, and I hope that you fully understand the impact of your leadership roles in this community.
Now, I'm sure, I would just say that this whole display shows why we need someone who is willing to both read and follow the rules under which we're supposed to be operating, because this entire demonstration has been out of order. I move the question. Do you know what that means?
We will be following the nominations in the order in which they were received. If there's no further comments related to Director Brown's chairpersonship, we will move into voting. Seeing no future comments, we will move to voting. So the first nomination was for Director Pyros. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? And opposed, okay. And all those in favor of Director Brown's chairmanship, please raise your hand. And opposed? Okay, Chairperson Brown is elected by a 4-3 vote. Congratulations. It will get this gavel to you as soon as we start. Well, actually, I'll probably just drop it at the district office, it'll be there for you. And it's your meeting now, Dave.
Well, that was an interesting transition. I don't know how else to, to say that. I'd just like to say thank you to, to everybody on the board for all the work you do. Brandy, I, we'll just have to chat again, I guess, and discuss some of those points of view. I would disagree probably for most of that, but I wanted to tell you thank you very much for your service the last couple of years. I'm sure I'll find out how much work it is. And I know you've put in a great deal of effort raising kids and being a board chair, so. Obviously, we have different points of view on, on things. And, but again, thank you for serving these last two years, so much appreciated. I'd also like to just say change is, is tough. Probably being the oldest person on this, this board, it's something we all go through in life, and change is very difficult. Obviously, tonight, some people are happy, some people are sad. Change is going to happen to everybody all the time. Last few years have been quite a change. I never thought about being on a school board before, and I'm sure you guys, it wasn't a lifelong dream until you get here, then you want to, want to serve. I think when we make these short speeches, a lot of things are left out. I think a lot of things are taken out of context. I would say the change that I would like to see would be civility. I think we've gotten away from that in our country. We've definitely got away from that in, in our community. And I think our, our recent events of the last few days comes to show that we're, we're divided. Dr. Joe Morlock and I had this discussion a year ago that we're being very divisive in our, in our community. And that's something that, that we have to, to correct. Even on this board, we obviously have a big challenge ahead of us to come together and try to work together. I really believe that when you're on a board, which I've been part of many, you aren't voted on to be best friends or agree on everything. But we were voted on to represent every single student in this community. I think the one thing that, whether you agree or not with the, the changes we're going through tonight, is that we were put in a public school setting on a board to represent the entire community. And part of our community feels represented sometimes, and part of our community doesn't feel represented. And even on this board, we're going to have tough discussions. I think it's imperative that we get back to why we should be here, and that's education. We've allowed the, the winds of the, the last couple of years to, to come into our schools, and it's, it's difficult. It shows again tonight. And wherever we're at with our, our viewpoints on politics or our viewpoints on the school district, we have to agree that we can focus on education in Newburgh for every single student, whether they've just moved to our community or they've been here their whole lives. Every student deserves our utmost respect and opportunity in this town. I did spend 20 years at Newburgh High School, and, you know, I did see a lot of great educators, a lot of great people on staff, administrators, and, and I saw difficult things too. People are going to make mistakes. People have a, an ability to sometimes be selfish. And sometimes people don't always do their best work even in our schools. But for the most part, we have really, really good educators in Newburgh. And I, I believe as a, a school board, even though like tonight, I think if we took another vote, we'd say how divisive we are and just how we, how we look at things. So I would ask each of us to put that aside and focus on kids. Maybe we don't want to go to lunch together. Maybe we, maybe this board retreat will be tough to schedule. But it shouldn't be about us. It really shouldn't. It should be about the kids and then their parents and the, and the staff. And we, we are pretty divided out there. So I would ask all of us to, to take change as it is. And, you know, Rebecca, I want to work with you. I know we got to have breakfast the other day, and, and we can disagree and we can see what each other does, that we do like and don't like, but we can work together. I think we do agree that, that people are the most important. And I hope we can continue that in our school district. So that's my, that's my change talk. Again, tough night for some, maybe a little bit better night for others. So I'll look forward to meeting any of you guys anytime, and so we can start to, to work on how that change looks for us as a board and you. So again, Brandy, I want to say thank you one more time. All the hard work, it'll be a challenge here to go through all of our different things we have to do to even get through this meeting tonight. So it starts off a little bit rough, and, and here we go. I would like to say congratulations to Zone Five Director Inez Pena for winning her election. She already was on the board, so she's an incumbent, so Inez, great job. Zone Four New Director Renee Powell, congratulations Renee for getting to the, the school board, I think. After tonight, you might not, might not think that. Zone One New Director is Trevor DeHart. Trevor, congratulations on being here. And again, three, two new board members, and, you know, here we go. One last comment to say thank you to Ron Mock and Bob Woodruff for all their years of service to our, our district. And they're probably tonight, maybe glad they aren't, aren't here tonight after that one. So we'll move into, to public comments. I don't have the form, Brandy, that you normally have.
Actually, Dave, it's not public comments, it's electing the vice chair.
What's that?
It's, well, two things, actually. So I do have the public, like the public kind of blurb, I say, before the comments.
Right. I kind of kept it by memory, but I'll go to the vice chair first and then we'll do that, so thank you. So right now, we are going to elect our vice chairperson. And so I would open it up to, to nominations for the vice chair.
I nominate Brian Shannon for vice chair.
I accept.
I nominate Rebecca Pyros for vice chair.
I accept.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, any other nominations? Okay. Again, I think we will go in order there with Brian Shannon first. Renee, do you have anything to say about your nomination?
I don't know, but I did want to say something about what just happened. I just thought that wasn't very nice. It didn't seem really professional that outburst there, but hopefully we can move forward and not and we all get along a little bit better because we are representing our students and this community and everything. So if we can't pull together as a board, as a board for our school, you know, that's going to reflect badly. And I read all the emails that came in. There was lots of them that came in in support of Director Pyros and Director Brown and there, and that really helped me make my decision as well, because there was around fifty-four for Director Brown and around thirty-one for Pyros, so. So that I really want to make sure that I was listening to what the majority of the community would, would want for the board and for our school, so. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
And Mr. Chair, point of, point of order, we're not supposed to be doing speeches about our nominations. We're just supposed to nominate and vote. So hopefully you will, you will follow the rules the way we're supposed to here.
Got it. Since tonight, we kind of went off of that rail, we'll continue one more time. I'm going to let Brandy speak about Rebecca, and then we will go to our vote.
I think it's really important for anyone who has been watching these meetings, even tuned into one meeting, can see that the disposition of Director Pyros is that of a leader. She is someone who will listen, who will meet with people she disagrees with, who is kind, who will help this board heal, and would be a good balance in the team of Director Pyros, or I'm sorry, Chair Pyro, Chair Brown. I'll get these word, I'll get them down. Chair Brown and Vice Chair Pyros would be a balanced team that could really help represent, and I think bridge a lot of the contention that we see on our board.
Thanks, Brandy. Well, if that's it for comments, we'll start with, for vice chair, we'll go with the vote for Director Shannon. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing Trevor on there. Trevor's that a y or a n?
He's waving.
And those in favor of Director Pyros, please raise your hand. Okay, votes four-three. Director Shannon, you are now the vice chair for the Newburgh School Board. Congratulations. I'd like to say Rebecca, I know tough night. I look forward to sitting down with you again and chatting and all the ways we can work together, so. Next up, we're going into public comments, and at this time.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reopen the discussion of the agenda. I believe you should call for a second.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Director Shannon, what do you have to say?
Yeah, so pursuant to our board policy on meeting agenda, I sent a list of items to the former chair last week, and none of them were made it onto the agenda despite the language that any board member or community member, or pretty much anyone can ask to have items add to the agenda. This isn't the first time, but I won't go into that. So I will simply make a motion to add those items that were left out to tonight's agenda, so.
Items, I have no idea what you're talking about.
I'm going to make a motion. I move that we amend the agenda to include the, a discussion of the following three items. The BLM signs in district facilities, two, the anti-racism resolution, and three, policy ACB.
And you want to, you want us to discuss this in, in tonight's meeting without any preparation?
That's, you know, you can talk to Brandy about why she did not follow board policy and allowing it to be on the agenda, but we can't.
No, but, but, but also for board policy, for the agenda, it allows the, the public to.
This is out of order. Dave, can you call for a second on my motion, please?
Renee already seconded.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
But that, the, the, the agenda is also to notify the public of what we're going to be discussing, and these are three issues that, that I don't feel able to discuss tonight in the, in a thoughtful and, and a, a good, a good way to get to come to any work, good work on it. It's like, I feel like you're pushing it through, trying to, trying to to, to I, I just think of, if we had done this previously, you would have been very upset and not very transparent with saying we weren't being transparent.
I would respond to that, that I attempted to be transparent and get these listed on the agenda by following the proper procedures, and that proper procedure was stored by the former chair. So I, I attempted to be as transparent as possible, Rebecca, but I want to discuss these things, and I'm not going to be stopped because one member is abusing her power over the agenda.
I'd like to just make a quick clarification on that. Director Shannon emailed me, actually, he emailed Joe too, requesting that these be on there. And I let him know that one board person we have operated cannot demand to have things on the agenda, and then as a board, we decide what's on the agenda. And if he would like to have these things on the agenda, the proper way to go about it is at the end of the meeting to say, for future agenda items, I would like these things on there, and as a board, we decide. So one member can't just hijack meetings and say, I want all these things on there. I think these, all the things that Director Shannon brings up are incredibly important, and I think we need to have the discussions. They do not need to happen in a gotcha-style platform where nobody's prepared, including district staff. They do need to happen, but I think that it's up to the new chair to decide how they should happen and when they should happen. And as a board, we decide if there are things we want to discuss.
Well, and these are also topics of great importance where I know or a fact, community members will want to add their public comment as we've seen in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, you want to hear from your constituents, don't you?
I absolutely do, and these are items for discussion. And I'll just quote from our policy, so that people who are listening and aren't familiar with our policies can understand and judge for themselves whether policy was properly followed in this case. Quote from code BD DC, "Items of business may be suggested by any board member, staff member, student, or citizen of the district by notifying the board chair and superintendent at least five days work, five working days prior to the meeting. Further, items of business not on the agenda may be discussed and acted upon by, if the majority of the board agrees to consider them."
There you go. The majority of the board has not agreed to consider this yet. That's why we talk about it at the end for future agenda items. Thank you for reading that policy, Brian.
That's why I made the motion to amend our agenda tonight, which is the pending question.
I'd like to remind everybody, when you're speaking to anybody else on the board for the remainder of this meeting and so forth, you will refer to the chair first, and I will acknowledge you. That goes for, you know, everybody, it's just proper procedure, so, so we don't have a, a, overtalking from each other, so. Let's address the chair, and then I would address you, and let's keep it that way. We will.
Chair Brown, I apologize. I'm taking the minutes, and I have two motions that are on the floor that neither one have been voted on yet. So I don't really know what to do. Brian and Renee voted to reopen the agenda. I don't recall if I got a vote for that, and then Brian also made a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the three topics that he mentioned, and Renee seconded, and we did have discussion. However, I do not have any votes for that actually to occur before we can move on.
Thanks, Jen. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I think right now, let's, let's do a quick vote on the reopening of the agenda, which will come at the end of the, in the, the end of the evening after our new business at the end, so. Those in favor of reopening the, against reopening the agenda, against it, saying no, go ahead and raise your votes now.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, you're supposed to take votes in favor of the motion.
All right, those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Okay, that, again, I'm not seeing Trevor on my screen, so I didn't see him there.
Your view screen, so that it says gallery, you can view all the little squares.
I didn't get that, Inez, thank you. So that vote passes four-three, so we'll talk about the end.
Sorry, go ahead.
Director Brown, we, we did not vote, you didn't ask for the, the vote in opposition. So you can't say it passed four to three.
And then you got to call the specific motion to the actual amendments that I made.
All right, for the no votes on the amendment that Director Shannon just made, please raise your hand, vote no. We have three votes there, Director Penner, Director Pena, and Director Pyros, so that passes four-three. So that will be added at the very end of our meeting.
Chair Brown, I also need a vote on the other motion that, to amend the agenda specifically to discuss the BLM signs, anti-racism, and the policies that were mentioned. That was kind of an amendment to the reopening, and I don't have a vote for that inclusion, if I may have another vote.
Director Shannon, are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that's proper.
All right, those in favor of that, please vote now. That's four votes. If you're not in favor, please vote now. Four-three, it passes. Again, that will happen at the end. Jen, are you good there?
I am good. We have an original vote and an amendment that was voted on, so now I have a reopening of the agenda at the end with three different topics.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Uh huh, thank you.
Okay, well, we're starting off real good tonight. We will now move into our public comments. Again, I'm putting this down, I don't have the exact language. We welcome everybody's comments to the school board. There is a three-minute time limit. Vice Chair Shannon, since Vice Chair Mock had to do this forever, this is your job now. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We please direct your comments towards the entire board and try to refrain from individual board members. There will be no board member comments at the end. That seems a little awkward, I know, but that's how it works. We will listen, and then you will be given a, an email in response. Always out there in the community, please feel free to, to email. It's frustrating, takes a lot of courage to call into the board, and it also takes a lot of effort for some of you guys. It's a little disconcerting, so thank you for having the courage to do that. You will be getting a response from the board chair, vice chair, and your input is valued very much. We thank you, and Jen, are you ready?
I believe so. I did forward you via email the final list as you were elected of people who were mentioned to speak tonight. I am going to attempt to move them over from the attendee list. A few of them, their names are not coordinating with what they have on their public comment request, so I will attempt to make an assumption. Hopefully, we get the right person up here, okay? Just give me a moment, please.
You're doing great. Thank you, Jen.
I have a Brandon Cooper. I believe he's the one who signed up as Brian or Brandon Casey for comment tonight. If you could turn on your video and please let me know if I have the correct person on the panel.
Yeah, you do. Yep. No, I just go to my, I, am I supposed to start, or I can only see you, so. I, I just, I just didn't know if I was supposed to start. I can only see you. I mean, it's just fine, I just.
The chair will let you know when it's time.
Okay.
Brandon, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Go for it.
I might, I mean, I might ask for like maybe extra thirty seconds, just because there was a few things thrown in there that I, that I wasn't quite ready for. Couple of that, number one, I wanted to congratulate Renee and Trevor as, as somebody that supported you both. I'm glad that you're I'm glad that you're here, and I think this, this, this city spoke loud and clear as to what we wanted, so I'm glad you're here. Secondly, as one of Dave's constituents, I would like to say that, that Dave Brown is a pillar of this community and, and a, and a, and a great man. I know him personally. He's none of the things that were mentioned before. I think those things were wrong and offensive. And, and personally, I, I think that what he did in terms of, of standing up against the racist, anti-racist bill took guts and the, and, and we appreciate it, so. Just wanted to, and that, and that racist, anti-racist bill needs to be thrown out immediately. But anyways, now back on, back to what I came to talk about. I, I, I just wanted to, I've heard conversations about whether there was going to be masks in students this year or going into next year. And I wanted to make sure that the board had some information that was just put out last week from, from JAMA, which is the Journal of American, of American Medical Association. Pediatrics, I mean, it's pretty much the gold standard, gold standard in terms of, of medical. You know, I mean, it really is the medical gold standard. Anyway, they had done a, a researcher, followed by a number of doctors from a number of different countries, did a study on, on twenty, or on fifty-five, or excuse me, forty-five total children to see what the, to see if there were harmful effects from children wearing masks. They found that not only i- is it bad, but it's, it's dangerous. What they found in that study, and that study is available, I can get anybody the link for it. I passed that information to some on the board, so I can give it to anybody, but what they found was, was that within three minutes of kids putting masks on, they were, they were, they were, they had six times the level of carbon dioxide that's safe for a full-grown adult, and that, that's within three minutes. They were already six times higher than what is safe for a full-grown adult. They measured one kid at twenty-five thousand parts per million carbon dioxide levels, and to put that into perspective, two thousand is considered normal. Their, their conclusion through all of this was that, that they okay, that kids should never be forced to wear masks, and that this evidence needs to be looked at strongly. I mean, these, these masks are dangerous for children, and children are the most, they're, they're the least likely group to get COVID. You know, I mean, they're the least likely group. They're, they, they rarely get it. They almost never spread it, and a kid has a better chance of being struck by lightning twice than, 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 than have, than dying from COVID. So why would we subject kids to, to this? And I, and I'll just follow this. Oh, okay, well, all right, I guess that's my time, but you know, my, my daughter had to go in to the doctor today for things that, that are symptoms of carbon dioxide poisoning, and she's had to wear a mask for the last six months, and we're now having to get her kidneys checked. So I would just urge you guys to, to, to stand up to this and not allow this to happen, because kids are getting hurt, so. And anyway, so, and congratulations to Dave and Brian. You guys are both awesome guys, and we, the city's got your back a hundred percent, so congratulations, guys.
Brandon, thank you very much. Jen, are we ready for the next one?
Um, I am not finding the next one on our list. So I'm gonna go I have a Maven, Maven Cornwell, but I can't find them on the list, so I'm going to go to Maurice Selkey. One moment, please. Marie, move to the panel and if you can get your video turned on.
Sorry, can you hear me and see me?
I can see you, go ahead, Marie.
I came today because I wanted to speak about the transparency in decision making at Newburgh School District. Um, when a recent email was, was sent out by the school district about max, masks in the building, I thought, oh boy, here we go, masks in school. This is a decision no one has any strong opinions on. I personally know people ready to pull their children if masks are mandated, I'm sure there's plenty that are willing to pull if they're not mandated. So I believe the answer is the school district must increase their transparency in their decision making. My first question is, who, who is making this decision? The email said, the district is making this decision. I want to know who in the district? Is it the school board that was elected and voted in by the people of Newburgh? I started attending school board meetings last fall to try to figure out why certain decisions were being made. But honestly, the board was not discussing decisions I want, was looking for answers to. And on the other hand, the decisions that did interest me, such as switching the high school day to an eight period block day schedule, was approved by the board and had the under, the, and also with my understanding, had the support of the teachers and administrators, did not happen. It just disappeared. Why? I want to make, know who's making these final decisions. Is it one person or a select group of people that is unilaterally making these decisions? The next is what? Yes, the CDC and WHO recommends masks for students that are unvaccinated, recommend, not mandate. But in Oregon, we have over seventy percent of adults in the stat, state vaccinated, an extremely high number nationwide. And that does not include those who have already had COVID and now have natural immunity. Yes, some students have family members that are immunocompromised and cannot get the vaccine due to medical issues. My question is, what is the percentage of people that has family members that cannot get vaccinated? Is it fifty percent? Is it eighty percent? Or is it one percent? Because if it's a low percentage, we can address it in a different way than mandating masks for all. What is the metric that is being used by this district to make this decision? Masks in school, what is the big deal? And I want you to consider this. Over fifty percent of communication is nonverbal and facial expressions is a big factor of that. Teachers rely on students' facial expressions to check for comprehension and student engagement can be increased by nonverbal communication between teachers and a student. Not to mention the most obvious factor, consider the amount of auditory information that is missed because of masks. We all can attest to that. Our district has students whose test scores have dropped and students with failing grades who are currently not on track to graduate. We need to capitalize on every advantage we have to reengage our students in learning. So if you're going to mandate masks, please do it transparently, otherwise just recommend it, so it's to minimize the number of students leaving our district or transferring out. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie, appreciate your comments.
Uh, I am working on pulling in uh, Mayor Newburgh Rick Rogers for the next person.
All right, good evening, Chair Brown, good evening, Directors, Jen and Superintendent Morlock. Good evening, thank you for, thank you for your time. Uh, Director Dehart, Director Pena, um, and Director Powell, congratulations. Um, and I probably should have been at another meeting, but also thank you very much for the work for Ron Mock um, and Bob Woodrop. I think collectively they put in fifteen years on the school district. I just want to remind you of one thing, um, listening into your earlier conversation, I think Jen wanted me to tell what my association with the district is. So I'll start with uh, all three of my sons graduated from Newburgh High School, uh, Maple Rush, Mountain View, Newburgh High School. Um, and I also coach at the high school and have for fifteen years, I think, just about. Um, and I work with Habitat for Humanity here in town, and as mentioned, I'm the, I'm honored to be the mayor of this community. I just want to give you a little bit of a notion of the community that we live in that I hope we remember, and it's the old small town thing, it's the bird. Uh, so we'll start with uh, Chair Brown, Director Brown. We um, we have coached together probably now for twenty years. I sat in multiple coaching meetings with Dave for years and years. I've known him by the time my kids were in school up until the present. Uh, Brandy, former chair, um, I served on the budget committee for a couple of tours while Brandy was there and have known her since then. Uh, Rebecca, I've known for the entire time since my kids were in school and on, and on until the time that her husband served on the city council. Um, Renee, I've known again for years, her father-in-law worked for Habitat for Humanity, um, and actually her son played rugby for me. So what my point is here, folks, in all of this, and I'm sorry, uh, Director Dehart and, and Director Shannon, we haven't had the pleasure of meeting in person, I hope to soon. My point is this, we are a small, oh, and Inez, Inez, how could I forget, Inez Pena, all right, Inez went to school with my kids, so did her sister Isa, and Inez has done a ton of work for the city recently. All right, so my point in this is, this is the same community. We are a small bird after all, so I just want to, to tell you all that the actions that you take at the school board level. One minute, that's quick, Director Shannon. Um, anyway, I, I just want to point out that the actions you take are not in a silo. Remember that we are, need to be a welcoming community, not just for the students entering kindergarten, sixth grade, eighth grade, or into the high school. Remember that it also influences the students that are coming to George Fox University. The, the residents that are moving into Friendsview, the businesses that we're hoping to attract with a hundred and twenty-five acres on the river, we're trying to get traded sector jobs. In my mind, we must be welcoming, inviting, and we must listen. No more silos, we need to work together. I hope the new board members will see that and that we will understand that this is a small bird for which we are all trying to work forward to make this community prosper. So thank you, I thank you for your time and your willingness to serve. Did I get it, Sha- uh, Director Shannon?
You were under the wire there by about
Thanks so much. Been around public comment a bit, so anyway, uh, thank you, otherwise, thank you so much.
Rick, thank you for your comments.
Okay, next I am pulling up Robin Wheatley.
Jen, you're doing great.
Thank you. All right, I believe I have Robin up on the panel, if you could turn on your video, please. And if you could unmute.
Thank you.
Hey, Robin, how are you doing?
Hi Dave, I'm good.
Go ahead.
How are you guys? Hi Renee, hi Trevor, hi Rebecca, hi Brandy, Inez, Brian, Joe.
You're up.
Okay, my name is Robin Wheatley. I currently have two kids attending Newburgh High School, excuse me, Newburgh Schools. I came here to talk about masking students. I'm opposed to all kids being mandated to wear masks next year. It should be a choice. I urge um, I urge the school board to vote no on masking. Here are my reasons. Kate Brown removed COVID nineteen restrictions June thirtieth, including masks for children. We reached the seventy percent vax rate, which she deemed safe to be unmasked. If most kids can't be vaccinated and the mask mandates have been removed, why would we put masks back on our kids? Kids in summer school are still required to wear them. Who decided this? I would like to see a vote from the school board. Kids need normalcy, they need to see faces for their learning and for their social well-being. Masks do little to stop the COVID nineteen germs. Masks have very big holes, the COVID nineteen germ is so tiny, it passes through the holes in a cloth surgical or N ninety-five mask, giving little protection. Kids do not like wearing masks, they're uncomfortable, hot, cause headaches, nausea, face rashes, among other things. Two kids almost died in Oregon last year due to mask use while participating in sports. They're dangerous. Many families have already less, left the district because of less education. I've talked to many parents and they are ready to pull their kids out of Newburgh Schools if their kids are forced to wear masks eight hours a day, five days a week. Kids have the lowest case and death rates from COVID nineteen, they are at the lowest risk, they do not spread it like the flu. Eight states have banned mask use for kids in school, such as Utah, Arizona, Texas, and South Carolina. South Carolina's governor said masking kids is ridiculous and parents should have the choice to decide if their kids want to wear them. Unfortunately, there will always be immune compromised people in our community. They should have the option to wear masks, healthy students should not be forced to. Also, there should be no medical discrimination due to vaccine status. Students should not have to prove vaccination in order to remove their masks. These are some of the reasons that I'm opposed to masks. I deeply care for our youth and their well-being. They have been forced to carry a burden that is not theirs to carry. Please vote no on masking our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, appreciate that. Jen, are you ready for another person?
I am working on that right now, we should be pulling uh, Rihanna Dodson up. She is on the panel, if you could turn on your video and microphone, please.
There we go, can you hear me? Okay, I can't, I can't see everyone anymore. Okay, hold on, there we go. Okay, now I can see everyone. Okay, awesome. Okay, um, well, uh, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. This is actually my first meeting. Um, it's quite interesting, uh, to say the least, to come into this with a lot of fireworks going on tonight. Um, but I am here to talk about what everyone else seems to be talking about as well, which is the mask uh, mandate for the fall. Um, so along with what a lot of other parents have already come forward to say, um, this just isn't, we're, we're past this. Uh, Governor Kate Brown had lifted the mask mandate, um, but yet here we are still being forced to put masks on our children. Um, Wilsonville and Westland and Albany School Districts have voted no to mask wearing, and I hope that Newburgh will also be the same for our children. This isn't just um, about wearing the masks, there's mental health issues that we have at play here. Um, germs, I don't know if anyone has ever taken a look inside their kids' masks, but it's disgusting, and I hate putting these things on my children's face day after day, um, and it doesn't matter how many times we change out the masks throughout the day, it's disgusting. Um, someone had mentioned earlier about uh, they don't fit properly. Uh, an example I have is when the email came out for any activity at a school in, in Newburgh that they have to wear masks. Uh, my daughter goes to care, the day that she went without any masks on, um, the care were forced to put masks on these children, and I will tell you, she came out with a mask hanging down from her chin because they do not fit properly. Um, if grocery stores and shopping centers and even the Newburgh Public Library do not require masks, our schools should not require masks as well for our children. Um, I just, I strongly uh, want this for our children, I'm new to this school district, uh, we moved literally the week that everything shut down last year. Um, so getting involved in the community with both my children and seeing what these children are having to go through is just, it's not fun and it's not um, what we should be doing as children, um, or watching our children grow. So I strongly want, as a parent, to speak on other parents' behalf of, we cannot put masks on our children anymore and it needs to stop. And I, I plead with the board, as you guys are the decision makers, that we put in charge of these really important decisions um, to consider this as we move forward for fall um, post COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna, and uh, welcome to Newburgh, so.
Thank you.
I know you're not quite new, but thank you for moving to here, so.
I feel new.
Jen, we're ready.
Okay, I am moving up, Zephyr Bissel. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. There we go.
Good evening. All right, thank you, Newburgh School District Chair, Board Members, and Members of Newburgh, um, for giving me a moment to share my thoughts. Um, tonight I did want to uh, talk about the classroom masks, that seems to be the topic of choice tonight, um, so I'll get right to that. I'm excited as we look ahead and get to focus back on the classroom for this upcoming uh, year. Uh, many feel that last year's uh, learning was greatly hindered by being apart, so having kids back to interacting with friends and educators is sure to improve our kids grasping the concepts that we're trying to get across. As we set up our kids for the future, I know that balancing safety uh, with success is a topic on many minds tonight. Um, so a couple of things that I have looked at, in May, Doctors Tracy Hoag, Lucy McBride, Allison Crung, and Monica Gandhi in California published an article uh, sharing their opinions on that children should return to school without masks regardless of vaccination status. They highlighted the CDC findings that the risk for children is too low to justify the remaining restrictions they face. About one in a thousand COVID nineteen infections in children results in hospitalization. Uh, new data shows this is likely an overestimate due to the uh, admissions that were misclassified um, at that point. With COVID vaccines now being available to adults who want it, the infection rate in children has dropped fifty percent from those rates last year according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. In November, the CDC published data for emergency room visits for kids. The biggest contributor to those visits was mental health. Um, in the first three quarters of the year, mental health visits were up twenty-four to thirty-one percent, depending on age groups for those less than seventeen. Dr. Manfred Spritzer uh, wrote in Trends of Neuroscience in Education uh, showing the negative impacts masks have in the classrooms. While he did a great job promoting the discussion on each side of the argument, his comfort was to make no mask in his schools. A lot of his remarks were based on the emotional uh, component of learning. Similarly, Chief Medical Officer David Brumba in the Children's Hospital in Colorado is declaring a pediatric mental health state of emergency. They have more children dealing with mental health visits than COVID infections. His numbers are more stark than the CDC's, finding a ninety percent increase in visits comparing April of two thousand nineteen to April of two thousand twenty-one. Dr. Brumba is urging a return to normal for our kids going back into school with now, with no masks. I urge you the same, please allow our kids to return to normal. As we walk around Newburgh, the comfort level for our kids is clear. Uh, when given the choice, they will unmask. Let our kids get back to worrying about algebra and not if they remembered a mask in their backpack. Thank you for taking the time to hear my thoughts tonight.
Thank you, Zephyr, appreciate you calling in. Dob, Jen, we're, we're moving.
Yeah, I've got our last person here, Melissa Tindall, I am moving up now.
Hello.
How you doing? Thank you for calling in.
Yeah, oh, I just lost it, okay. There we go. Um, so I was just um, informed about this news, this is also my first meeting as well, and um, sorry, children, but um, basically about the masking like everyone else and just putting in my comment and how I feel about it. Um, and how it's affecting our children and how they're just unable to express themselves with their friends and their teachers and especially my daughter who's in kindergarten, um, she already struggles with speech and not being able to really see her teacher speaking certain words um, is a struggle and um, and just hearing um, just like how they don't feel free and to be a child, I mean, can you imagine how we would have been as children to wear masks every day and express ourselves? Uh, that's just not how this world is run. And then And then, you know, we go to grocery stores, we go to events, and no one's wearing masks now because it's not mandated anymore. And yes, it should be, you know, considerate for maybe children and older kids that might have health issues and they should have that option to wear a mask or, you know, something else considerable. And so I just wanted to speak in and on behalf of all the parents and the children, especially because our children's children are really wanting to not have to wear these masks. And it's just very important to consider that and especially seeing other places not mandating it. Certain districts, because it's up to the district to decide that. And it's very frustrating. So it's, I want the best for our kids. I want the best for all the other kids. And so I just want to speak on behalf of that and hoping that the school board will agree and make the mask optional for parents that feel the need for their children to wear it. And obviously, you can still do the distance learning if needed as well. I think that's a great option. So I appreciate your time and I hope you guys have a great night and I look forward to seeing what you guys decide on that.
Melissa, thanks for calling in and we should probably make your shirt the motto for our district. It's a good shirt. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jen, how we doing?
That was our last signed up, person signed up for public comment this evening. So we are ready to move on to the next.
Jen, we're learning how we go here. Tougher night, but you're doing great. Thanks for everybody for calling in and appreciate that. Our next thing up is going to be board and superintendent comments. I always kind of liked the way Brandy did it there. I'll just call on people and we'll make it random and change it up as we go in order. So you don't always feel like you're first or last. And so with that, I'll go to Director DeHart, you're the new guy. So what do you have to say tonight?
Do I need to say something?
No, you don't. You don't really.
Well, you know, obviously, I'm the new person on the block, me and Renee. So this is, this is all new. I'd just like to thank you, all the directors and the staff for attending. You know, this is, this is a big commitment and, and I, I think when I raised my hand and volunteered to put my, my name in the hat to, to run for this position, maybe, maybe my eyes weren't wide open, but they certainly are now. And I've had the pleasure of sitting down with Brandy and Rebecca and Brian and Dave. I've got a meeting with Joe, Dr. Joe, on the second of August. So I'm excited to meet him. And as I haven't met you yet, but hopefully in the near future, we can meet and talk. Look, I, I, I know that there's some history and there's probably some hard feelings. But I know from getting out in the community when I was going door to door that we have wonderful people out there. And I, and I, I know that you all are wonderful people and your heart's in the right place. You know, you're spending time that you could be with your family or doing some, some other thing, but you're giving back to the community. And I think that that's why we're here. We care about our community, our kids, our teachers and the parents. And you hear the concerns when they call in, you see it in their emails. And so I would just encourage all of us, you know, we have different frames of references. We have different things, talents to contribute to this team. And I just, you know, I just pray that we, we can heal the hurts and, and come together to find solutions, you know, for our kids and our community, our schools and, and our teachers. That's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, Director DeHart. That's a good ending right there. We will go to, again, one of our new people, Director Renee Powell.
Hi. Well, I just wanted to say thank you and I do look forward to serving beside all of you and to build, be building a positive and productive relationship, not just with you, but with the administrators and the teachers and most importantly, our students. I promise not to take this position lightly and I understand the responsibilities. And to all the parents that are out there listening on Zoom, I will assure that you and your children's voices are heard. Whether or not that you voted for me in this election, I want you to know that I am dedicated to serving you. When we work together as members of the community, we can accomplish great things for our children and for our schools. And I'm really grateful too, to my family and my friends and loyal supporters who so generously contribute their time and effort to my campaign and most importantly, all the prayers. Words cannot express how I feel and thank you. And I've had the pleasure of meeting Rebecca and Brandy and Dave and Brian as well. And Inez, I would love to go do coffee and get to know you better and, and get to know you. And Joe, I think we're playing
Schedule tag. Yes.
So look forward to getting to know you better as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Appreciate that. I'm going to move on to Director Penya. Penya, would you please go? Brandy?
All right. Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I want to formally welcome both Renee and Trevor to our board. Congratulations on your election. And I've had the opportunity to meet with both Renee and Trevor, and I'm looking forward to building a strong working relationship with each of you. I've learned a lot in the last two years of this board service and I'm hoping to work collaboratively with all board members who are willing to show that they can work as members of a team. Because we know that contention and division are exhausting for everyone and I'm striving to work, to have working relationships built on trust, understanding, and respect with both of you. Let's keep the channels of communication open. If you have questions or want to chat, I am here to help. Recently, this board has been inundated with emails from constituents, as we all know. And over the last few weeks, we have gotten so many. And so I thank all of our constituents who have written in. We received 96 emails to date sharing perspectives on the district's conscientious efforts to ensure that all, all of our students feel safe and that they belong. 87% of these emails were in support of the efforts of the district and the staff. And I wanted to share a really short one that we got from a student. It was impactful. Hi, my name is Sarah Boyd and I am 13 and going into eighth grade. I believe that having a Black Lives poster in a classroom is fine and that people from outside our district should not be able to influence the school's decision. The school is one happy family and we should stick together. I have personal experiences of being cared for at Edwards and Chehalis Valley Middle School and I loved all of my teachers. I'm part of the BSU, the Black Student Union. I'm glad to be in a safe school district. I will refer to Amanda Gorman as I love her poems and she inspires me every day. Here is a poem I made. I am weak, yet I am strong. For others, help me along. They give me food and water to drink, but I do not wash my hands in the sink. My hands are dirty and filthy, yet they, my neighbors, still care for me, even if there is nothing to share. Thank you, Sarah. I think these simple and powerful words are a call to action for every board member here. We must continue to work to make our students safe, safe from violence, safe from judgment, and safe from hatred. If we want all of our students to succeed academically, we must help support the creation of environments that allow our students to be freely who they are. Academic greatness does not grow in fear. In the words of educator Edie Hirsch Jr., "Our society cannot afford a two-tiered system in which the affluent have access to superior education while everyone else is subjected to a dull and incoherent classroom experience." Academic excellence, educational equity, and fairness demand a strong foundation of knowledge for all learners. And I'm asking every board member here who is committed to academic excellence to recognize and commit to ensuring that we do not help support a two-tiered system. Our students simply cannot afford it.
Thanks, Brandy. Appreciate it. Director Penya, are you ready?
Um, yeah, welcome to our new directors, Trevor and Renee. I also want to thank the supporters that got me reelected. I know I did a spiel at a previous meeting, thanking everyone. But, you know, seeing that my position was constantly threatened to be removed and being that I'm still here, you know, I'm really honored to be representing the community and ask that I'm, you know, not personally attacked and that there is no hate towards me because I am representing a part of the community that is often unheard and unseen. Yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Penya. Director Shannon, you are up.
I will be extremely brief. I just want to welcome Renee and Trevor to the board. And congratulations to you, Dave, on your election as chair. I know you'll do a fantastic job fairly administering our meetings and get this team centered on what's best for students. That's all I have.
That was quick. Thanks, Director Shannon. Director Pyros, you're up.
All right. I also want to congratulate Trevor and Renee. Welcome them to the board and look forward to working with you. I do look forward to working with Dave and Brian and, and to do all I can to serve the students and the staff of the community that I was elected to. And I, I want to serve and, and support your duties and to support the, the district in all that I can do. I also want to thank all those, the people who wrote in regarding the selection for board chair. It was, it was quite heartening to, to, to see the different letters. And I appreciate the, the support very much and wish, wish you good luck.
Thanks, Director Pyros. Appreciate that. Last, obviously, I know Brandy always went last two here on this kind of thing. So I think I would just say that, you know, maybe tonight we can figure out through a tough meeting that our differences could be our strength. The, the different challenges that each of us face, the, the things that we've had to live through. You know, I, I would really like to bring us together on that point instead of maybe worrying about what we perceive as weaknesses. You know, let's, let's think about that before we get together again and even before the, the retreat that maybe this could be the very thing that kind of unifies us because we do have some unique skill sets in here and unique perspectives on how we all look at things. So that's kind of my challenge to you. I had a lot of fun the last three weeks. Still get to coach for Park and Rack. I had over 160 kids in tennis camp and Pee Wee Sports Camp. You've never experienced life until you've had 52, four and five-year-olds running around Newburgh High School at the same time. We had a lot of help though, so it was fun. Met tons of great young parents. So it was really fun to hear their experiences. Some of the people called in, just the fact that their kids were out playing for, for a lot of the people, that was their biggest reward as a mom or dad or a grandparent or grandma. So, you know, I think that just seeing how happy the kids were was much more important than what we were trying to teach in, in our, our lessons out there. They were just having a blast, whether they were eating popsicles on the Mabel Rush Playground or they were attempting to hit a, kick a soccer ball. And I, when I say attempt, that's a pretty big word for four-year-olds. They were trying their hardest and it was hot. You know, it was like mid-eighties. So they were, they were really giving it all they had. So we have a lot of kids in our community. It was fun. That was the first time a lot of these kids had been in any type of a, a formal setting with other kids. And the parents, there was even parents with tears in their eyes, watching their kids. One thing I've learned in all the years coaching is we have great parents in our community who, who really do try to reach out and help a lot of kids. But when it's their child, you know, they have that extra soft spot just to seeing them have fun. And I, I know most of us on the board can, can feel that. So it was a lot of fun to do that in our community and it was, it was fun to hear the parent feedback from these, these younger parents. So that was my fun. And so that's it for board comments. Thanks you guys for being honest. And we're going to move on to Dr. Joe Morlock's comments right now. So, Dr. Joe, are you ready?
I am. Thanks, Chair Brown. And I will keep this in interest of time short as we move this head for the rest of the night. So I did want to thank or welcome, sorry, our new board members, Trevor DeHart and Renee Powell. So welcome to the, the school board and the next three years of your life on every other Tuesday. So we'll be here. Rain or shine. So welcome aboard. So glad to have you with you. Also want to thank all of our public commenters. I know that masks are one of many things that people have high interest levels in and differing opinions. And so we'll go through some of the information we have tonight and kind of what the next steps are in that process. So I'm glad that you've tuned in for that. And then I, you know, I, I want to reflect back what several of you have said tonight. And I think off to a bit of a rough start, but if we pull back and remember that, you know, we really do need to focus on civility. The kids are watching. We will have students on our board this year. So I think that will be a good way for us to be able to check in with how kids feel about things. We do need to support kids and that means all kids. And truly diverse opinions do make the best decisions because we want to make sure that we have shown a light into all the corners of the argument and the, and the documentation before we move forward. So I hope that we'll get to continue to do that. Again, welcome aboard to our two new members and continuation of Inez. Congratulations on your reelection. And then we, of course, work together as seven people plus myself and Jen Nelson, who keeps us all organized, which is not an easy task to do for a lot of ways. And so thanks again and let's move on with the agenda. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dr. Morlock. Appreciate that. Next up is the consent agenda. And proving the minutes from the, the June 22nd, 2021 board meeting. So is there a, a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that the Newburgh School District Board Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, you guys. Again, I'm following suit with what Director Penner did. I, I, this is a big one on our donations. Kind of the lifeblood of so many of our programs are the donations that come in from around our community. And I think it's worthy of taking the time like we have before to, to acknowledge them. So I'm going to, right now, Newburgh Early Birds Rotary, $2,493.70 for flagpoles for baseball and softball fields. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Alan Love and Tina Johnson, $2,000 for PortaCool for the NHS Athletics. So thank you to Alan and Tina for that. We have an anonymous gift of $500 for the girls' lacrosse team. As a former coach, it's, it's awesome. Those things are, they're huge. That's a lot of money. Thank you. Hardwood Industries Incorporated spent 12 years of my life working there. So I know those people. $250 for the NHS Track Team. So Jeff Workla and all the workless, thank you so much for your donation. Libby Boys, $1,103.30 for the NHS Resource Room for new clothing and racks. One of my favorite places at the high school. I wish that would have been around back in the day. That's a great room. There's been so many great things done there. So Libby, thank you very, very much. It helps a lot of kids in there. It, it's really done well. Mark and Elizabeth Moisen, $750 towards the NHS Food and Nutrition Culinary Program. That's awesome. And then $750 also from them for the NHS IDS Program. And that's from Mark and Elizabeth Moisen. Very generous. Thank you so much. And then for Merton and Sons Landscape LLC, know those guys pretty well. They donated $1,000 to the NHS Trap Team. So again, shows the, a lot of different things there that people are interested in putting their money to. And without those donations, a lot of those things just don't happen. So thank you so much to all those people. We have the Personal Recommendations for Accepted License Probationary Contract, Accepted License Temporary Contracts, administrative appointments. Accepting temporary administrative appointments for the 2021 22 school year. And accept license resignations. I'm going to say her name because she is Sarah Parnell, Teacher at San Valley Middle School. Sarah, thanks so much for all your hard work you've done through the years. So I would move that, is there a motion to on this consent agenda?
A point of order. You already passed the consent agenda.
Oh, we did it the first hour, didn't we? Got it. Sorry. Right there. Thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate that. As we move forward now, we're going to go towards Dr. Joe again. And he's going to make a presentation on the Ready School Safe Learners Update. And Superintendent Morlock, are you ready?
I am, and I will have Dr. Brown join us in a moment. There he is. So I'm actually going to start by just saying we've got lots of information still kind of coming at us and things are in a bit of delay. So we'll talk about where we are overall, and then we'll also talk about masks at the later part of that. So I'm going to start off by handing it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Brown. And he's going to go through a couple of quick slides and we'll talk a little bit about the framework that I included in the packet for this week.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Pardon me just a second, Director Brown. Get this set up for us.
Well, Assistant Superintendent Brown, that's okay. Good last name.
It's not letting me share my screen. Sorry. Hold on just a second.
You know, Dr. Brown, just going to chime in that since you have a new laptop, it's unfortunate, but you may have to actually quit out of Zoom, change your settings and get back into Zoom, be able to share the screen. So I wonder if.
What if I emailed my slides to Dr. Morlock and he pulled them up? Is that possible?
That works great.
Okay, hang tight for just a second. Sorry about that, everybody.
We ruined it by getting you a new laptop.
And I really appreciate you doing that, too. Okay, almost there. Okay, Joe, I just sent it to you. Okay.
Loading up now and now it's not a split personality issue. It's a I blog it with my other account. So we're good to go here in just a second.
Well, while that's coming up, I'll just say a couple of things to kind of get ready for it. As Dr. Morlock said, I'm Derek Brown, I'm Assistant Superintendent. And I'm just going to spend a few minutes going over some information, given that we've got a couple of new board members. We thought it might be a good idea just to go over the most recent guidance that we have from the Oregon Department of Education or O D E, as we call them. Last year, of course, they put out guidance that they called Ready School Safe Learners. And that guidance was intended to help inform districts as they were thinking about how to manage distance learning, which we had a portion of our year in distance learning, and then how to manage whatever version of in-person learning that you might be shifting to in the springtime. Most school districts went to a hybrid plan. Newburgh did that as well. So I go, you can go ahead and go to the next one, Joe. Thanks. So on June 25, they put out new guidance for us that has to do with things that we need to be thinking about as we prepare to reopen schools for the 2021-22 school year. So what I'm going to do here is just as quickly as I can go through kind of some of the big pieces of information that need to be discussed and decisions need to be made on. Some of these things are are going to be pieces of information that you probably already have. We certainly heard a lot tonight during public comment about face covering. So I'll talk a little bit about the guidance that we currently have from the state on that one and a couple of other things. Go ahead, Joe. So again, O D E released the, what they called the Resiliency Framework on June 25. So again, that's kind of an update to the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance. Just to provide some clarification, the Resiliency Framework is focused on advisory health and safety recommendations. So by and large, for the most part, the decisions that are made around things like face masks, vaccinations, and so on and so forth are going to be local decisions. Districts are required to submit operational plans that do include community engagement like board meetings, for example. And then those plans will need to be posted on our website or public websites. You probably remember a little bit last year about the the school blueprints that we had to create. So each school had to put together a blueprint that talked about all the different facets of the operation of school. And those were submitted to the state as well. We believe that the operational plans that are going to be submitted are going to be similar to those blueprints from last spring, but O D E has indicated to us that they will be smaller in scale. And the operational plans are required in order for us to receive our S R three, which are which is one of the flavors of federal relief funding. So we don't have access to those funds yet and districts will not receive access to those funds until their reopening plan has been approved. Go ahead, Joe. For next year, districts will return to the following requirements. Communicable disease management, instructional minutes, materials, attendance, enrollment and state assessments. These things have all been in place, but through the pandemic last year and the closure of schools, there were lots of adjustments made to these things. For example, we we were given a different definition for how to count attendance because kids were attending school online mostly until the end of the year when we shifted to hybrid. The state assessments were waived last year. This year we ran them, but they were sort of presented to us as optional. Those will be back in full effect next year. Go ahead, Joe. The, again, kind of the big buckets that that the Resiliency Framework focuses on for us to think about our vaccination, protective equipment, which includes face covers, face coverings, physical distancing, hand hygiene, and then airflow and circulation. Go ahead, Joe. So in that first bucket vaccination, just a reminder for folks that on in under Oregon law, minors that are 15 years and older may give consent to receive medical treatment, including vaccinations. However, parental consent, of course, is required for children who are 12 and 14 years old. Again, as I mentioned before, it's a local decision whether or not to require vaccinations for staff and volunteers. We have already heard of some districts that are going to require vaccination. Another option would be to require a release of liability. So there are a number of different directions that Newburgh could go here. But this is going to be one of those areas that a decision will need to be made about whether or not we require vaccinations or not. And so as soon as I finish and I hand it back over to Dr. Morlock, he'll open up the discussion for you all to talk about what direction we should be thinking about going with that. Go ahead, Joe. With regard to protective equipment or face coverings and physical distancing, again, what I'm presenting to you is not Newburgh's plan. This is a reflection of the information that's provided in the Resiliency Framework. So these are, this is information they're giving us. O D E and the Oregon Health Authority are still strongly advising face coverings for students with accommodations for those that have medical needs and or disabilities. This is an important point that everybody needs to be very clear about this second bullet. Per CDC order, which came out on January 29th earlier this year, face coverings are required when using public transportation. And that does include school buses until that is lifted by the federal government. So O D E has kind of foot stomped this so that school districts are clear about it. This requirement cannot be waived by state or local entities like school districts. So as of right now, mid-July, heading into next school year, they are telling us that masks will be required on school buses. It's acceptable for fully vaccinated and unvaccinated people to be outdoors without a face covering. Face coverings are not a substitute for physical distancing. They're still recommended in addition to at least three feet of physical distance. And O D E and O H A strongly advise cohorting. We don't believe that there will be a need to to consider cohorting for next year. But again, that's something that's still available should the situation change and we need to take a look at that. So again, lots of public comment about it tonight. We know that face covering, face masks is a big issue that needs to be addressed and a decision needs to be made. Go ahead, Joe. The last couple of slides here, probably a lot of information that you already have ventilation and airflow. Very important. We felt like we addressed this in really positive ways prior to the pandemic and through the pandemic. So we will continue to focus on effective ventilation techniques, including to increase the amount of fresh air from outside that's introduced into the system, proper exhaustion systems, utilizing air purifiers when necessary and keeping windows and doors open and using fans to move air. So those will be things that we continue to do where appropriate. Go ahead, Joe. And then hand washing or hand hygiene. We know that that is a really important strategy for managing germs. O H A and O D E strongly advise students have access to soap and water and alcohol-based hand sanitizers. So we will make sure that we continue to do those things as well. And of course, staff and students will be encouraged to use those tools often. Go ahead, Joe. And then lastly, isolation and quarantine quarantine protocols. Again, we wrote these into our blueprints last last year as we were preparing. So we need to continue to define how we handle situations where someone might be positively identified, which also means exclusion and isolation protocols for students and staff, as well as being able to handle safe transporting of students or staff to home or healthcare. So we know that that will be be part of our reopening plan is to continue to have those protocols in place. We ended up utilizing those protocols on at least a few occasions last spring. So we have some experience with how to do that now. Go ahead, Joe. So what happens next is O D E will release additional guidance for the operational plans on July 22. Additional guidance means they will give us specific timelines and they'll give us templates and other pieces of information we need in order to complete our operational reopening plan. So knowing that that's coming to us on the 22nd, we'll be working hard to to put all of that together. Our plan would then be to bring it to the board for review sometime in August. I don't know which date will make the most sense, but we have to have that done, approved and posted on our website prior to the start of school. So hopefully it'll be early in August, but we'll be working hard to put all of that together for you. And again, just as a recap, big decisions around potential requirement for vaccinations or not, or or some other requirement for release of liability. And of course, the conversation about masks and whether or not those should be a requirement. Those are a couple of the big decisions that need to be made and then written into our operational plan for your review and approval. I think that's it, Joe.
Okay. Great. I'm going to stop that sharing. All right. So as you can see, there are lots of things that are coming up and that meeting actually is August 10. So that would be the our meeting. Unless Jen tells me I'm incorrect, August 10 is our next is our August board meeting, which means we have a fairly short window to figure out some of those things. So we'd like to talk a bit about where masks are. Somebody asked earlier about how decisions are made and and some of the data sources that we use. And I do want to clarify that as hard as this has been, it really is about the safety of other people's children who come to our schools every single day. And I think that's always the hardest thing to remember. Right now, what we're seeing is 25% of new cases of all new cases are in children. And I think that those are the the numbers that start to to go. Also remembering that people who are under 12 or for at least currently, there's no vaccine. The Delta variant is now the most prominent. Those cases are again on the rise in Yankhill County. We are in, I think, 13th place in Oregon as a county. We are nowhere near 70%. We're just about 60. 60.5%, I think for Yankhill County. So it's important for us to continue watching those things. I don't as you recall, last year, we people wanted to know when we were coming back, when we were coming back, and we decided to delay that decision until we were ready to make that one. So we could tell people for sure we were going to come back to school in person. I think it was probably in Derek's presentation, but we are planning on again, five days, everybody back in school as normal. We're really talking about what it looks like when they come to the building. So I think it's important. I'd like to hear from, we don't have anything to for you to vote on tonight. So we'd like to just hear from each of you in the discussion where you're leaning toward when we talk about masks and about masking students, masking adults. We know that that is actually the best way to prevent. And that's how we have done that so far. So I wanted to just hear you from each one of the board members. And Dave, I don't know if you want to just go around or if you want to just popcorn. But I would like to hear kind of where your where your thoughts are. You know, we still have lots of work to do on this, but I also want to make sure that we're in line with where our school board believes we should be going as well.
No, thanks, Dr. Joe. I'll I'll go around and change it up here a little bit. We'll just start off with Director Pyros.
Well, I I think that the the variants. If we could ask for for vaccination, but not mandated, but have the people sign a liability that that they are willing to take on the risk. And then it's it's up to choice also for masking that that students who who feel the need to wear masks are are allowed to wear masks. And those who don't also, they take their 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 parents can take that risk.
Okay, thank you.
Director Pyros, appreciate that. Rebecca, when you, can I ask you a question? Were you when you said like the liability form, I get that. Were you thinking just for parents or students or staff or what were you?
For for staff and and if need be for for the parents, for their students.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Penner, you're ready.
Ready. I'm always ready. I agree with Director Pyros. And I think I also would want to add that I would really like to hear from teachers, staff, principals, because they're the ones who are going to be in the buildings in the classrooms with these people and potentially could be exposed. And we all know the beginning of school is and excuse me, I have a cold right now. I'm a great example of some who's not wearing masks. We know the beginning of school, it's like a Petri dish. It's just gross, especially in our younger, younger kids. And those are the that can't get vaccinated. I would and I would really be interested in hearing from.
Okay, thank you very much. Some of that went out on me. I didn't catch quite all of that, but
Sorry.
Okay, well, I think what I heard was liability waiver, similar to research that and also polling staff to see where they are. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Director Penner. We'll go to Director Powell. You're next.
Hi, I would also agree with with Director with Rebecca. Is it appropriate to say Director Provost or the, can I say the first name? How am I supposed?
Either way.
We can do it both.
Okay. Okay. So yes, I would agree. I think it should be a choice. If the parents want to have their kids wear a mask or not, and I think that's a good idea to have a signed consent. So there's no liability with the schools or you know, any lawsuits or stuff like that, that could so if they sign out an agreement that that they're okay with that, that it should be, it should be a choice. And and I've been doing tons of research on the whole mass thing and all the legal ramifications and stuff like that. So so I'm just been really educating myself on the whole. so I'm just been really educating myself on the whole mask and the vaccines as well. And I don't believe that we should be mandating vaccines as well. That is also a choice between a parent and a child and if they should vaccinate their kids or not. And I don't think that we have a right to ask if they've been vaccinated or not as well. That is private information and it's against the HIPAA violation.
So Renee, do you hang on one second. So Renee, when you mean ask, you're talking about, are you, do you mean students who are students who are vaccinated or are you talking about staff?
Um, I don't think we should be asking students, are you vaccinated? Or the teachers should not be condemning kids or making them feel bad if they have or have not, or if they choose to wear a mask or choose not to wear a mask. I don't think it should be a big issue. The kids are dealing with enough stuff and they don't need to be having that extra pressure put on them. Because I've heard from parents that in certain schools that teachers have already been almost not bullying, but ostracizing the kids that do not want to wear masks and or have you been vaccinated and asking these personal questions to these little kids. And they come home crying to their parents. It's like, I'm going to be because their parents don't want to give their kids backs vaccines. And then they they're coming home crying because they're being ostracized from the teachers. And I don't think that is in their place to be doing that to kids. So it's between the parent and the child.
Thanks. Thanks, Director Powell. Appreciate that. Director Shannon, you're up.
Yeah, if I can ask some questions. Joe, what are there? Are there any metrics that we're tracking to decide when it's going to be okay for us to lift the mask mandate? Because it feels like we're on this track of never getting off of students wearing masks in school. You know, we always, we used to have metrics when we were thinking about reopening that we would be following. And I don't see anything along those lines. So it seems like perpetual masking is what we're looking at. I'm also concerned about delaying the decision as far as we're talking about. Because as we've heard a lot tonight, and I've heard this from a lot of parents as well, parents are going to start looking for other accommodations for next year if they think their kid might have to wear a mask next year in school. And so to delay that too shortly before the start of school, which what remind me again, what the first day of school is this year?
September 12.
September 8th and 9th.
Eight. Are you saying we would vote on this?
No, we would bring you the plan on the 10th.
On the 10th, so.
Do you mind if I just add to that?
I sure.
I don't think that that necessarily means that you have to wait on making a decision about masks until then.
Right.
Make a decisions on masks before we submit our plans, frankly. So that's just the moment when, I mean, the earliest we can get you a plan is by then, based on when O D E is going to give us the information we need to complete it. But you could, you could certainly make the decision about masks before that. And then the public would know what direction it's going. Just a thought.
Um, I appreciate that. In that, you know, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to move that we lift the mask mandate. And then as we get closer to school, if it looks like things are heating up and we don't feel like that is sustainable, then we can revisit that. But right now I'm going to move that the Newburg Dundee School District Board of Directors repeal the face mask mandate in district facilities.
So we have a motion there for that I didn't think we were quite ready for a vote, but is there a second on that?
My second. Um, I just don't understand why we're moving so quickly on this. You haven't heard everybody's opinion yet.
Yeah, I'd like to table us for a second here until we get through the rest of the directors. So we'll bring that up as soon as we get to Director Penney and myself and Director Dehart after we talk about that. So that motion is we got a motion, we got a second and we'll table it for a minute. I'm going to go to Director Penya. Please share your comments.
Yeah, I mean, I hate masks just as much as everybody else does. But COVID really impacted my family. Even on this board, it's a seven member board, and I believe I was the only board member who got COVID, not because I wasn't careful, because I was careful. However, my family is part of the essential workforce that was out providing food at restaurants. You know, being the essential workers that need to be keeping this going. And I do think that if if folks want to not wear masks, that there should be a signed waiver. But if not, you know, safety is number one for me because I lived through COVID and it's not fun. It impacted our family in ways that I cannot even begin to tell you. So to me, this is real and the safety is real. And if we're asking our educators to put themselves on the line, this is something that we really need to be asking for their opinion, I think, because they're becoming the essential workers that will be exposed. And yeah, kids are super spreaders, to be honest, about anything. Why do we get colds? You know, because we touch here, a thing here, we touch a thing there. And then we're just sharing germs. So I think we need to really think about how we're going to keep our students safe, our employees safe, and overall our community safe.
Thanks, Director Penney. Appreciate that. I'm going to go to Director Dehart.
I just ask, I need one to clarify.
I'll go for it.
As as you facilitate feedback, because you have a motion, I think, and a second on the table. So one clarification would be if you lift it immediately, does that include you? You have active summer school going on right now. So you're in the middle of that and we would need that clarified.
Got it. Thank you, Derek. Appreciate that, Derek. Director Dehart, your comments.
Um, yeah, I've got, I've got one question and and then I'll go on with my thoughts. But this waiver, what exactly is this, this waiver that we're talking about?
Well, there are different look. So there are different ways to look at a liability waiver. And one of those, when you consider if staff have been vaccinated or not vaccinated, the waiver would not ask one way or the other. It's not actually HIPAA violation to ask for proof of vaccination status for our staff. We do actually require people to have vaccines and have proof of vaccines, not of this current vaccine, but of other ones for all schoolchildren who come. So polio and measles, bumps, rubella, thing like that. In this case, we would be saying either you acknowledge that you have been vaccinated for COVID-19 or that you release basically the district from liability. You get COVID-19 within our facilities. Somehow you could prove or trace it back to our facility somehow, that you're assuming that risk by being unvaccinated. The next step of that then is also then that where you would, as part of the registration process for students is that people acknowledge that that the some of the measures that are being currently strongly advised are not going to be in effect. And so that you, by bringing your children to the building, you are acknowledging that you are possibly putting them at risk and that that liability is yours. So part of this is about trying to figure out what that looks like. I know people have been working on it through our insurance carrier who does that. There is no coverage for the coronavirus of any kind. So they don't, they don't actually make a coverage for that. So we have to figure out where our liability lies and and what our comfort level is on the risk. So that would be something about providing that opportunity for people to to assign liability to say, yes, I acknowledge that they're coming to the building this way.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. I I, you know, we've all lived through this pandemic. I'm sure we've all been doing our research on masks. And, you know, I've been on the CDC website punching the numbers on death rates, hospitalizations, all that, right? So I I try to educate myself on it. I know at one point I did read an article that said that, and I can't remember the age groups, but younger kids were twice as likely to die of the flu than they were of COVID-19. Have we ever asked, you know, we have each year, we have the the flu vaccinations. Have we ever asked for? I'm not sure if indemnity is is right or asked, you know, parents or or students to sign waivers due to other vaccinations?
We have not in those for all those other diseases. No. We've not asked for those. This is an entirely different kind of new case. And so this is where it's been interesting to see where your liability insurance carriers are trying, are are going back and forth on. So that's why we're looking into this as one possibility.
Yeah, uncharted territory. No, I appreciate the due diligence and and for you taking the time to explain it. Here's my take on it, right? I mean, we heard from the, from a lot of the parents, right? People are passionate about it. I think, I don't think anybody out there likes wearing masks. And so, you know, if I have my druthers, I'd like to see our schools make it an option, right? If 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 a student feels safe wearing a mask, then more power to that individual, right? Let's, let's not single them out. You know, let's, let's let them do that, right? But I don't think that we should be mandating it for for all the children. You know, given the feedback, given the 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 science or or conflicting science, if you will. And so, you know, I I kind of agree with what the rest of the board is saying. I I would say this, that, you know, whether it's COVID or the common cold or the the upcoming flu season, whatever, I I would say that, you know, from my experience, I don't know how much of that is spread through the air as it is cross contamination. You know, the the super spreader kids that I believe Director Penya mentioned, you you know what it's like, right? It's a Petri dish within that first week. It's just spreading, you know, through the school and into the house, whether it's colds or the flu or whatnot. So I would say that is there anything that we can do if we're going to provide, you know, hand sanitizers, soap and stuff like that to to really push the education on how this stuff spreads, you know, with the hands and cross contamination. I spent, you know, 27 and a half years in the military putting on Ken Warper outfits and and having that whole thing driven home to me. So e- even my own kids and and my 80 year old in-laws still don't seem to understand how how that stuff happens. But I I would say that if if we can educate the kids and really foot stomp that, you know, and and be cognizant of it, having good situation awareness as the school season starts, you know, and just reminding kids of that, I think that'll go a long way.
Thanks, Director Dehart. Joe, anything to add to that one or do you want me to go?
Uh, no, I think, you know, these are, I'm trying to to get a, you know, a general idea of where folks are. And then one of the questions that Brian asked before was what are the metrics? And of course, we're always looking at the Yamhill County COVID statistics. We watch those and we're, you know, back on the rise again. So we're always tracking those. Of course, there's lots of science out there. I try to focus on some of the simpler metrics to know what's happening. You know, I think that the concerns around the variant changing its course and now infecting, you know, the 25% of the new cases. So I'm always watching those and it's a respiratory disease. And I just want to be, I think we'll find that people will wear masks and people won't wear masks. You know, if we make it into a into a choice, some people will, some people won't. And I think we'll probably have a similar amount of folks look for other options, which we're already pre-planning if we decide to go this way, to be able to increase our staffing at our online program. As we know, some people will choose to not send their kids in. So we're trying to plan parallel paths, you know, as as we look at what we do for staffing for next year. Because it could affect where we place teachers and and on how that staffing goes. So we we do have those systems in place to be able to do that. So that'll be, it'll be an interesting thing to see what what happens next. But and then Dave, I want to make sure, so you have not yet spoken.
No, I was just waiting for you. You're doing good stuff.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, rock and roll. No, you're in.
I was just going to ask, since Superintendent Derrick there, summer school dates are what this year? So when are we? I know we're already in middle summer school. When does that finish up?
We have two more weeks to go. I was actually just checking on that myself.
That last name thing, we're on the same page here.
I'll have to double check and get back to you on that, Dave.
No, no problem. Thank you very much. That was a question I had. And then care also. Does care go through a parking wreck? Does that go through into the summer or does that stay at two weeks also?
I I do not know the dates of care and how far they go. They're, you know, they're a vendor in our system. So I'm not sure where they, how long they have rented the facility or not rented. They they use the facility for free. So I'm not sure how long they're going.
I guess my comments, I mean, Director Penner, you can laugh at me or, you know, when you go last, you guys used up all the good material. So I would say you know, it seemed like the public wants to go back with no mask, but I would definitely like to see everybody have that option. I had it in camps this summer. Some families just feel that way. And I think with everything they've been through, they should have that choice. And there shouldn't be any type of, just like we would not want kids to be treated any differently if they don't wear or do wear a mask, that we're conscious of that. Same with staff. I'd like to see them be able to you know, come back to school and have that option. And when it comes to the the vaccine, I think, again, it's 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 a, you know, private medical, but I see our liability. I think for me, Dr. Joe would be getting some more information on that, you know, liability insurance thing, how that's going to play out for us with staff would be, you know, is that different than it is with our students and our parents and stuff like that? So that would, that was kind of my main question. You guys all brought up great points. But I think that the you know, a lot of different areas around the country have opened up and are doing pretty good with it. And but I think, Dr. Joe, you said it really well, many, many, many months ago, that, you know, this is kind of like skeet shooting. This is a moving target. So what happens tonight doesn't necessarily mean a week from now it'll be the same.
Director Brown, just to clarify, so we have migrant summer school going on right now. I'm still checking on when that ends. Care is all summer long. And then in terms of other summer camps and programs that are going on, we have one going on this week. And then pretty much the entire month of August, we were able to utilize some relief grant money from the state to run a dozen or more different camps. And so those are kind of spread out through August. So when we say summer programming, there's a few different versions of that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate Derek. That's all I had on that. Dr. Joe, anything else to add to all that?
No, just, you know, as as we're, you're moving ahead with the vote, I I don't know if there's some clarifications you want to make around, you know, staff who are not vaccinated, are you going to require them to wear masks or not? You know, is that something that you want to consider? You want us to bring back in our framework as we start looking forward to how we have to actually operate schools that's not summer school and not, you know, something operated by a third party vendor like CPRD. So I think those are some of the other questions that I think we could probably bring back and talk about when it comes to both liability and what we require. Because as an employer, we are seeing some employers require vaccine to return to work. And so I don't know where we'll end with that. And we have some work, of course, we will meet with both of our labor associations to check in with them and see, you know, how how they feel about looking at that. And so we have a lot of folks to to work with between here and the 10th of August to come back with what we think our best framework recommendation would be overall for the operation of school next year.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to amend my motion. We could affect the the first day of school for the next year to give the district staff time to do some research on liability issues and things of that nature. So I move to amend my motion to make it effective the first day of school for the year 2021 to 222.
We have a motion there. Do we have a second? We have a motion there. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. If you're in favor of,
Director, Chair Brown, could we re-clarify the motion?
Yes, thanks, Rebecca. Director Shannon, would you re-clarify that again one more time?
Current motion is a motion to amend my motion lifting the mask mandate to make it effective the first day of school for the instruction year of 2021 to 22. So if you vote for this, that would make that the effective date at which we lift the mask mandate. Uh, it is not, uh, voting on this will not decide whether we're lifting the mask mandate or not, but simply setting the date for when that motion would take effect. To clarify for district staff.
May I, may I ask a question, Director Brown or Chair Brown?
Yes, you may.
Is this just for students or is this also for staff?
Uh, it would be for everyone in our facilities.
Director Brown, or I'm sorry, Chair Brown, can we have discussion on the motion? Oh, sorry. Can we have discussion on the motion, please?
Yes, we can. Open that up for discussion. Go ahead, Brandy.
So I just wanted to clarify, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote because as a voting member, I don't feel like I have enough information. I don't know what staff would prefer. I don't know. We've heard from ten to twelve parents, which is, is not representative of our thousands of families. And I, I am, I'm glad we're having the discussion. It's an incredibly important discussion. I don't think I personally have enough information to say yes or no at this point.
Got it. Thank you. Director Shannon, you were talking about before you made that possible motion for like right away. So you're talking about moving now to September first, is that right?
Uh, what, what was the date? September twelfth, I think?
Eight to ninth.
Eight to ninth is first day of school.
But that would be the effective date.
Uh, Chair Brown, I've got one question for Director Shannon. Uh, on your motion, do we need to add stipulation that, that masks are, or, or did you say that, that it was optional?
It is simply lifting the mandate. So yes, they'd always be, like, before the pandemic, they were optional. A student could wear a mask to school if they so choose, chose. This would lift the requirement for people in our facilities to wear masks.
Okay, thank you.
That's on the main motion, but we're just on the motion to amend currently.
Any other discussion on that?
I would like to ask for Joe's input.
Thank you. Dr. Joe, would you like to, to speak to that?
Sure. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is, this is exceptionally challenging. And I, I think that the, the hardest part, and, and I probably come down more conservatively on the protection of the people who are in my charge. And so I, I have, of course, been very cautious about this. I think that we don't still yet know enough. I do appreciate Director Shannon moving this back to the beginning of the school year so we can continue to watch this because the data that, that I continue to see just locally here in Yamhill County as the numbers start to increase worry me. I think that we've done a pretty good job. You know, we did have cases coming to the buildings. We did have to do some small shutdowns and, and so I just, I, I always am concerned about that. I think we don't know enough. I think we often focus probably too much on death. And death, of course, is a bad thing and it's terminal, but there are what you hear about for long haul COVID effects. And I think those are the ones that we don't yet know enough about in terms of what it does to the, to the body over the several months or years. And so I just, I probably fall on the far more conservative side of, of, of taking care of people. So I think that we have some work to do on the liability part of it, the liability waiver and insurance. We've gotten some later information from PACE, who is our primary insurance carrier. And so of course, as part of my duty to the district to keep us also safe from lawsuits and liability, I have to also weigh that in as well. So I think we've still got some runway. And I think that if we, we'll bring back some better recommendations on August tenth. I do want to check in with staff. I think that that, right, that from a couple of you talking about Chair Penner or, sorry, Director Penner, you said about polling staff, and I think we should do, you know, people are kind of out. And I hope they're having some kind of summer break, those who are not working in summer school. But I think we can certainly ask people, you know, kind of where they are and those things too, so we have a better idea. Cause I think that's important to do. So I, I think, you know, move, moving this back to being effective for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year gives us enough runway that if we were to have to change direction, you know, and bring this back to the board and say, let's talk about this next thing because the numbers continue to change. That gives us some of that time. You know, I, I'd like to set expectations that make it easy for people to understand what they're going to see. And I think we did that pretty well last year, whether people liked the expectations or not. At least they understood and they were clear. And so I think that's important for our community to know what, you know, what they're coming into when they come into school next year. And so I want to, this gives us, again, a little more time to work through it and to watch the numbers. And if things kind of just fizzles out again, great, then we can, you know, roll forward that they start to, to increase in significant ways. Then we probably have to have another discussion. So I'm, I'm comfortable with putting that toward the effective date for the beginning of the school year. And then that gives us again, time to make other decisions if, if things are to change.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarity. Rebecca, did that answer your question there?
Yes, yes.
Great. Any other discussion?
Sorry. I'll clarify my question. So if we were to lift the mask mandate in our buildings, would that still mean that by law, masks, masks would still be required in the buses?
Correct. The school buses are not affected by any of this. It cannot be changed by local or state mandate. That's a federal piece. Yep. Good question.
Any other discussion in there? Uh, Dr. Joe, I would say too, I mean, one thing I know, we've had this talk. I think we kind of share the same heart on this. You know, there's always the one side about, you know, when we're, we're, we're protecting, you know, one way. And then we have the other way of the, what we, you know, address for some of the parents. And I've heard it a lot. I know you have heard it a ton is, you know, the, the mental health of our kids, you know, what masks have done. Some people totally don't agree with them. Some people totally do agree with them. You know, the learning piece, you know, I know coaching this summer, when I can see their, their facial expressions, it, it is, that's a real true teaching statement. You know, you can tell if, if the lights are going on. So with all that, you know, speaking to that, you know, I think we have, there's the COVID thing, and then there's the, the, the whole teaching piece of this. I know we've talked about this. So if everybody's comfortable, I think what I heard Dr. Joe say was with Director Shannon's motion that that gives Dr. Joe and his staff and, and, and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Derek Brown, time to put all this together. I think we would all agree if we get towards the end of August, say, and, and things were took, took a turn for the worse, we would meet, even if we had to have an emergency meeting and we would switch directions. If it's for the absolute protection of our kids. Everybody's hoping not for that. So I think what Dr. Joe just said to me makes a lot of sense to move forth Director Shannon's motion, and then that gives him a lot of runway, like you said. And then they can come back to us with all the recommendations. Any other discussion there? Guess not. Everybody's pretty clear. Dr. Joe, Dr. Brown, thank you very much for that.
Point of order? Don't we need to vote on the motion?
Yep, just about ready to do that one. So we have that motion. Director Shannon, would you repeat your motion one more time?
Yeah. So first we need to vote on the motion to amend, which would set the date of the main motion to take effect at the start of the school year for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So that's what we're voting on first.
Now it was seconded by Director DeHart, so time for a vote. If you agree with that, please raise your hand. I'm seeing unanimous or I'm seeing no. Hands down, if you are against that, no vote, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing everybody there, but I believe it was six, one.
We need to ask extensions.
I couldn't see everybody. We just popped up there. Speak again there.
Uh, you may have abstentions, so you should call for abstentions.
Anybody abstaining from that vote? We have two. Final vote would be five zero two then. Thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate that. Again, Dr. Morlock and Dr. Brown, thank you very much for making that real clear. Appreciate that.
And now, Mr. Chair, now we need to vote on the main motion.
Yep. So will you restate that again so we're clear?
Yes. Uh, so the motion is I move that the Newburgh Dundee School District Board of Directors repeal the face mask mandate in district facilities to take effect on the first day of instruction for the school year of twenty-one to twenty-two.
Is there a second on that?
Uh, there are.
Second, so we're good to go there. All right. Be prepared to vote there. If you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing five right there. Any no votes? No votes, abstain votes. Got two, so the final vote would be five zero two. Thank you very much, you guys. Thank you, Director Shannon, for doing that. So again, I'm going to follow suit what we've done in the past. It is nine fifteen. We're going to take a five minute break. We've got some more stuff to do here. So turn your sound off and you got five minutes and we'll be right back. Thank you very much, everybody. I know we had all kinds of, you know, stuff coming up there, Jen. This has been a tough one to kind of get everybody lined up. I think probably being in person and everybody's raising their hand and getting a date on the calendar is easier than doing what you're having to do with that. So thanks for your effort on that. I did notice that August twenty-fourth at six PM to ten PM, I tried to change some plans around to be available. So I don't know how that works for everybody else. So I guess I would throw that one out there as, as a possible date. Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, six to ten. So how does that sound, everybody? What's that?
You're saying you can make that one now?
I can do that one, yeah.
If, if that's the only one everyone can attend, I would say let's do that one.
I was going to ask everybody to speak up and say if you're good with that one.
Sorry, Chair Brown, did you say August twenty-fourth? What was, what was the time?
Six PM to ten PM.
Okay.
So it's a retreat. We've done that in the past where it's been pretty much all day and then the dinner. So this is shorter for sure, but probably shorter and more intense during that time. So maybe not as intense as tonight, but pretty intense. So how does that sound, everybody? Is that something that, any nays on that one right now?
Works for me.
Okay.
Are we planning on doing that live or virtually?
Well, we've got to discuss that, everybody. That's the second part of this discussion.
Uh, I would be comfortable doing it in person.
I would also.
I would like to do it in person as well.
Brandy, how do you feel?
Yep, comfortable in person and the twenty fourth is great.
Okay. Inez, how do you feel?
Um, the twenty fourth, I believe, were. Um, I don't know about in person. I I just don't know about. I'm not too comfortable unless I know if we're all vaccinated, then I'd be comfortable in person and I don't wanna put anybody on the spot and ask if you're vaccinated or not, but.
Nope, totally get you. Rebecca, how do you feel about that?
Well, um, the twenty fourth is good and I I feel comfortable if I'm allowed to wear my mask protection to my family.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Um, Brandy, I'm gonna kind of throw this one at you. I know you probably, you know, put a lot of thought in this, you know, ahead of time. If you guys were comfortable, it'd almost be fun to kind of go home and meet down to district office. Uh, what do you guys think of that?
I think it's a great idea.
Do you have other thoughts where to meet?
No, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, and the boardroom is also large enough that we can make it, so it can be spaced out and we could have some other things available, and we've got bathrooms and things, so the the boardroom actually would be a good, probably a good spot if you want to do it in person, it's big enough.
Awesome, Joe. No, thank you. What staff would you have there, Dr. Joe?
Well, I guess that depends on what, um, what we're talking about, uh, as far as the retreat goes, so that would really, that would depend, obviously, would be Jen and myself, and then depending upon what else is on the agenda. Um, we do have some people who may be out on vacation, so we'll just take a look and see, but, um, by and large, we should be mostly okay on the twenty fourth, so I think of after, um, you discuss what you want to have on the agenda for the board retreat, then I would adjust staff for who would be there, who might need to be there for that one.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I my my first thought, again, I'll get everybody's input on this, uh, since Derek Brown is our assistant superintendent, um, if he's available, he's probably going, no, I don't want to go. But if he's available, it would probably be really nice to have him there also.
Yep.
So, um, Derek's probably going, awesome, there went there went a night, so, uh, but, uh, how's everybody else feel about that? Would anybody be okay with that?
I have a question for Joe.
Do we have?
I have a clarifying question for Joe. Are we set on having the system ready to have still a virtual way streaming this for people to join in and see? I know that we were working on that, but I don't know.
So yes and no. It probably, the system system will not be fully operational, but we will have a way to be able to, uh, even if it's sort of low tech, we'll be able to broadcast uh, what we have going on, so we'll we'll work on making sure we have something that gets the the sound out. I don't know if we'll be fully operational by that point. Um, but we'll we'll capture the sound and get it out, and so it may not be quite as pretty, um, but it certainly certainly will still be available.
Thank you.
Yep.
That was kind of my question. Dr. Joe was making sure if Inez does not want to attend, we can make sure that she's part of that whole thing.
Yeah, no, Inez would certainly go, we can bring in, uh, multiple attendees. I just meant for streaming out to the public, it won't be quite at its prettiest yet, but you know, we've been doing it in rotary and it seems to work okay, but with we have a specific attendee like, uh, Inez or anybody else who who may need to attend remotely. Um, we'll set it up to make sure that you're that you're available on screen and. So, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, well, it looks like we're set then. We'll go Tuesday, August twenty fourth, six to ten P M. Um, at the, uh, the district office and, uh, we will, uh, um, we'll have a good retreat. It'll be a little bit different, be shorter, it'd be fun to be back in the district office, uh, room down there, so thanks, Dr. Joe, for for allowing us to be.
Yeah.
So we were good on that, and it's not a voting thing. We kind of already said that, so we're gonna move on to the next thing. And that will be uh, the designate signatures for building level student body accounts from Nikki Fowler, Director of Operations and Finance. Nikki, are you ready?
Uh, yep, I am. Um, good evening. Um, I'm gonna just go through these different resolutions. We do them at the beginning of each year just to identify, um, different people for signatories and different business operations. Um, so the first resolution is around naming signers. Um, so you have been able to review the list in front of you. Um, and I'll just ask if there's any questions, because it's pretty self-explanatory as far as taking off some staff, adding other staff. Um, and I'd be just looking for a motion.
Thanks, Nikki. Do we have a motion on that?
I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve and designate the depository signatures for the fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty two as listed.
I second.
Thanks, Rebecca. Any more discussion on that? No? Or are we ready to vote? Raise your hand if you, uh, approve of that one. That is seven zero. Thank you very much. Nikki, got that one done?
Right, so the next one again is pretty, um, self-explanatory, but we're basically identifying, um, all of our depositories, so the different banks that are involved, um, the pool and our investment firm. Um, because with the bond funds that we have now, we do have some with the investment firm, that's Piper Jeffrey, where you haven't seen that name before. And Zion Bank is also a newer name, um, that is also there to handle our bond funds. Um, because the pool will only hold fifty two million, so anything above that we have to have out in another account insured through another account. So this just lists all of the different accounts, um, where we deposit funds. Are there any questions on that? I'd be just looking for a motion.
No questions. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty twenty one oh one, a resolution authorizing deposit withdrawal and borrowing of funds by title only.
I second.
Thanks, you guys. We have the motion in a second. Uh, if you're in favor, please raise your hand. Perfect, Nikki, seven zero. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we're on a roll now, so let's do the next one here. Um, and this one again is listing the different, um, banks again that we are using and utilizing. Some of them are talking about transfers between banks because we do need to transfer, um, from our pool, um, to Wells Fargo to make our debt service payments. Um, so this is just another formality, um, authorizing us to make all those transactions.
Excellent. Any discussion on those? Any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that the Newburgh, uh, School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty twenty one or twenty twenty one dash two zero two, a resolution authorizing deposit and withdrawal of funds by title only.
I second.
Any more discussion? No, raise your hand if you, uh, oh, yes. That is seven zero. Nikki, you're doing well.
Okay, let's keep that going here. So our next, um, resolution identifies, um, various signers in the districts and various duties and roles. Um, and so as you can see there, you've probably reviewed it beforehand, but designate the following appointments. So this is where it's gonna talk about the Chief Administrative Officer, Custodian of Fund, Authorizers for Purchase Orders, um, Federal Grant Representatives, so that is who can sign off on the federal grants, um, and so on. And it also talks about and identifies our different legal counsel. We have several of them depending on the type of issue that we might bring forward. Um, a newer one we started with last year is Willamette E S D. Um, and that works a little bit differently where we just pay out of our credits for that, so we can ask questions um, anytime, any day. Um, so we don't have to be afraid about the bill coming in all the time when we have a a quick question that we need to, um, follow up on, so that's been a really great service that we have, uh, joined. Um, but anyway, so again, just looking for a resolution to approve all these people. Our motion to approve these people.
Got it. Any questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I will move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty twenty one oh three, a resolution establishing designated school district appointments, financial auditors and legal counsel by title only.
I'll second.
About that, any more discussion? Okay. Raise your hand if you vote yes. Nikki, twenty eight, no, you're pretty good.
Great, thank you. Now you're all ready to go home almost.
Well, not quite. I gotta brag about you too. The new board members, uh, Director Powell, Director Dehart. Uh, Nikki Fowler has, in my two years, been the probably easiest to track, follow. She's always squared away, ready to go, and she talks fast and the numbers are big, but she does a great job, so, um, she's always open for an email, though, if you have a question that that you missed in there, so I've done that a few times and, uh, uh, Nikki, always appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I and I would, um, add to that, that with the new members and everything. Feel free to reach out if you want a quick little rundown of the budget or the process of the reports before we start getting in too far into the school year. Um, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions.
Great.
And so just shoot me an email or give me a call.
Thanks, Nikki. All right, you guys, got through that one. Uh, next up, future agenda items, um.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, are we at the point where we would discuss the amendments to the or the, uh, additional new business?
We are at that point. We are at that point.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna leave your first one there. I'm backtracking to my first part of the meeting there. Director Shannon, what is the first one you had on your list there?
Yeah, so the first, um, item I'd like to discuss, uh, is the posting of B L M, uh, Black Lives Matter and Pride Flag, um, displays in district facilities. I believe, you know, uh, regardless of how you feel about these organizations or these messages, I feel that these are inherently political symbols and posting them in taxpayer-funded facilities, uh, essentially equates to indoctrination of students into certain ideological beliefs. I do not believe that is appropriate. I need, I believe we need to refocus our, uh, district on education, not indoctrination. And I would move that the Newburgh Dundee School District Board of Directors direct the superintendent to remove all Black Lives Matter, AKA B L M signs, flags, placards, in all instances of the symbol known as the Pride Flag from district facilities immediately and direct the policy committee to draft policy language, prohibiting the display of political signs, flags and placards in district facilities with the sole exception of the American flag and the Oregon state flag.
Okay, there's a lot there. We have any discussion there?
I believe you should call for a second, Mr. Chair.
I second.
There's our second. We have a second from Director Powell.
Chair Brown, can I speak?
Yes, you may.
I think we need to table this motion. We're already close to an hour over schedule. It's been a two and a two hour and forty minute meeting. Um, I'm exhausted. I don't know if anyone else is, and these topics are heavy and they deserve our full and complete attention. Um, so I will motion to table this motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have two motions out there in a second.
So you have to take the motion to table first.
All right, uh, we're just dealing with this one right now. I know there's a couple more, so, uh, the motion to table. It's been seconded and, uh, if you'd like to table that right now.
Hey, could you? Chair Brown, can we have some discussion on this?
I would love that. Go ahead.
I would feel the the need to table this to allow our constituents to to put in their input and our and our, um, staff to be able to look at at if there's, if we can legally do this and and to to really consider this more thoughtfully, not just at this spur of the moment.
Chair Brown, I would also like to speak.
Yes, Dr. Penny, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in this particular motion, um, we did receive a ton of emails about this, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I could get them. Um, and the majority were supporting a principal that supported students and faculty um, to express themselves and feel welcome, so I I would want to hear more from constituents, um, if those emails were not enough for you, Director Shannon.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something too. Um, yeah, I would like to hear more too from, um, the community and every and other people, because I've heard, um, concerned parents from the other side that have uh, that children are feel scared with having some of these flags in the classroom because they have police officers as parents or family members that are police officers, so it represents, um, a different thing to different students. So to make everybody feel safe and all the students to feel welcome and safe, it's we have to think about on for everybody on both sides. So, so maybe it would be good to just hear from from everyone, from the staff and parents and kids, how they feel. I'd love to hear how the students feel.
Thank you, Director Powell. Appreciate that. Um, I think I've heard from everybody but, uh, Director Dehart, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I, um, I would echo that, you know, um, I think I've said this before, I think a lot of times, you 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 know, the the symbols and the groups of the political and social um, uh, movements that they represent, um, are not black and white, right? They're gray, and I think we need to to have that discussion. You know, it is it, is it, is it one or the other, or is there, is there a happy medium, right, that we can express ourselves, that the students? You know, I don't know what, um, what Director Shannon's thinking, but, um, you know, are we, are we talking here that the 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 school as a government e- uh, entity, um, you know, shouldn't be, you know, supporting one cause over another, right? Um, or are we saying that that kids aren't allowed to express themselves? I think that they're they're two separate issues. Maybe a Director Shannon wants to talk about it.
Sure, yeah, so in my mind, uh, this language, uh, we certainly, I am absolutely for students being able to, uh, you know, wear whatever clothes they want, express whatever message they want. I've been very consistent that I support free speech of our students. I think there is a big difference between that and government-paid employees who are paid to educate children using that public trust that they have been given to instill their own political values and mores onto our children, and that to me crosses a line, uh, into propagandizing, and so this this language is meant to s- to restrict our staff and teachers from from forcing their own political views on our children, regardless of how we might feel about those particular political views.
Director Dehart, did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Director Shannon. I I guess my thought on this right now is, um, tough issue, but it's, um, Tough issue, but it's, um, the one thing I've noticed in my two years on the, on the school board is. We've, we've, we tend to keep losing ground to our focus on the public charge to be a, a, a school. We, we were put here to educate our, our kids, and I, I feel like we've lost our focus in a lot of areas, not just this one area, but a lot of areas. And, uh, that's from the school board to the superintendent on down, and we, we have to get our focus back to the kids and education. And, uh, some of these things, uh, are extremely important to, to some and to others, they're. They don't agree with it, but it has divided us, and it has, uh, really caused a lot of angst and, uh. But I, I agree with you guys. I would like to table this until August tenth. Uh, come back with your data, come back with your stats. I think it's one of those things where we have not spent enough time talking about a lot of issues. And we're gonna start doing that, and I think this would be our first good test. This is a tough issue, and so do your homework, come back with the. The right information, uh, that, that you come up with, or, or the, the information that you feel is valid. With, with the, uh, the thought, though, that what's best for all of our kids in our district. We also have this thing called a hundred and forty one million dollar bond, and I know, uh, Director Pyros, we've been through those changes at the school. It's incredibly difficult, what, uh, the schools of Edwards, uh, Dundee, maybe, depending on how it goes. And high school are gonna go through with these, uh, massive building changes, so we've got a lot of distractions. All those distractions impact everybody, every single kid. My kids went through those three times. So I think if we can table this to August tenth, we all do our homework and come back and be ready to. Tackle our first big issue as a board. We talked about trust, we talked about what's best for our kids. Are we, we're, we're, we're really willing to do that? And I think, uh, just our opinion's not it. We weren't elected to this board for our opinions as much as. Is, you know, what are the facts about having, uh, for example, uh, political things in our schools, you know? People might view those differently, so we'll have a lot of passion from the, uh, constituents. I would caution that even like on this thing between, uh, voting for board chair and things like that. Most of the people in our district don't even know how the school board works. They don't know how the district office works, and again, this was a case in point tonight. Um, it's nice to have everybody's input on that, and, uh, again, some people were happy, some people were sad. Uh, but this vote came down to a school board vote. We didn't have anything like this the last two years, and, uh, I think it's one of our things that. Would give us a strength as a school board to. Educate our community better on exactly what the school board does and what, uh, the district office does, because a lot of people don't know. And, uh. When we're, when we're talking about how the community feels, we really, uh, need to be careful how we're, uh, you know. And even in my own neighborhood, there's differences of opinion on this issue, so, uh, it's, it's a good one to, uh, start off with, a tough one, but. I would say, uh, I would like to table this to. August tenth, our next meeting, and, uh, I don't know, what do you guys think about that?
Well, there, there are two motions on the floor, so we should vote.
Okay, first one, then, we voted to, uh, the motion to table. It was taken by Dr. Pyros. If you're in favor of tabling until August tenth, please raise your hand. Looks like we have a seven zero vote on that, I believe. I think I got everybody on that. And our second motion was, is the, uh. Correct me if I'm, uh, repeat that one, Dr. Shannon.
Uh, yes, so, uh, the second issue I wanted to discuss was the, uh, stats of the anti-racism resolution. That we, the board passed last year, you know, um, that was passed a very tumultuous time, and we basically just adopted boilerplate language. Uh, that was given to us by OSBA, uh, and I think it behooves us, you know, a year on, uh, now that things have calmed down. And we've been able to, you know, I'm sure all of us have heard a lot from our community about it. Um, and it had some language in there that concerned, you know, a lot of people that I've spoken to, um, so. My emotion for that one is that I moved that the Newburgh Dundee School District Board of Directors direct the policy committee. To draft replacement language for the anti-racism resolution, resolution twenty twenty dash four.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We've got a second there. Director Powell, thank you.
Chair Brown, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have to point out that, um, when we were talking about adding these items to the agenda. They were noted to be discussion only, um, we are at this point making motions and decisions. That have not been properly noticed to the public, and I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that, that that is outside of the public meeting laws. I also need to point out that we do have interpreters who are assigned to our meeting only to be here until ten P M, which is twelve A M their time. They will be leaving in nine minutes, but we will no longer have Spanish interpretation provided. I just didn't want to, before we continue on with motions, I do need to point out that we are in violation of public meeting laws. We have not notified the public. That these decisions would be made. Discussion is allowed, but to have something on the meeting agenda that's been added. For a decision is an entirely different thing.
Got it. Thank you, Jennifer. Again, I think this is one where we can, uh, I would ask to table this one to, to August tenth, give us time to get that. On the agenda, give the notice, uh, get it set, do your homework, uh, come back with what, uh. Everybody thinks the, the resolution did last year, and, uh. Again, I would, uh, like to see that happen on August tenth. Any discussion more on that?
Do we also need to, we don't have a, a policy committee yet.
We don't. We're in a brand-new time here. We gotta put all those together. Becker, is that something you're interested in?
Always.
Awesome, thank you. So, with that said, Director Shannon, I'm gonna just, uh. Make a motion that we table those, or we'll just table those until August tenth. Um, are you comfortable with that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you should probably take a vote on the motion to table, just to be formal about it.
We'll also need a second on the motion to table.
I'll second it.
I don't, I don't think we should be making motions, though, right? If we're outside of, of public meeting law notifications, if I'm understanding correctly.
Motions to table are simply carrying it over to the next meeting, so that's kinda what you guys have been arguing for.
Okay. So if we have a motion to table. To August tenth, do we have a second on that? What's that?
Second.
Director Dehart has seconded.
Okay. If you're in favor of that, please vote, uh, right now with your hand going up to August tenth. Good, looks like we're seven zero on that one. We are at six minutes till, Jennifer, I really appreciate you telling us about the, the language. Brian, you have about sixty seconds to, to say your last one there.
Okay, uh, the last one is policy A C B, which was passed outside of the normal order of business. And in contravention of our rules last December, uh, I would just say that I would urge everyone to go and. Look at the video of how that went, uh, because members were not allowed to propose amendments, uh, the. Normal order of business per Roberts rules was not followed, a vote was not taken to end discussion. So it was illegally passed, uh, and at the next meeting, I will be moving to rescind it and refer it back to the policy committee or for the review.
Okay, we got your comment on that. No need to vote on that one. Uh, Jennifer, we have a couple minutes left, right? Before they, they, before they go?
Yes, we have a few minutes.
Okay, Jennifer, again, thanks for all your help, uh, you're so key and instrumental on this. Uh, I'll get better and, and we'll work to this. I'll probably come down and see at the office, so we can go over stuff and, uh. And try to do better for the next meeting, so thank you all for, uh, being here. Um, again, our, our differences can be our strength. Um, I'm a coach, that's how I think, so, uh. Instead of getting, uh. You know, fired up and mad at each other, I think we need to take our differences, be able to sit down and discuss these issues. And, uh, uh, listen to each other. I, I will listen to you. Um, and I want you to listen to me. Um, I didn't like everything I, I heard tonight either. Uh, but we, uh, I think when we signed up for this board, Dr. Joe said a long time ago, we may get our feelings hurt once in a while, so that probably will happen. Uh, but you're putting in a lot of time and hard work, and, uh. I challenge everybody to come back August tenth and, and, and be ready to go. I think that'll probably be our last meeting in Zoom, because we'll probably be, uh. Moving to go back in, in person, so, uh, thank you very much for coming tonight and, uh. Appreciate all you guys. Thank you for the public for watching, so, good night, everybody. Now, during this meeting right now, I don't have a gavel to do that, because I gotta get it from Brandy, so. I'll just use the, the coach's one there, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.